If I say something about it. That was soft reflection. Yeah. (laughing).
Yep. Okay. Max won't be here. I don't know where. Um, is Cody, is Dan gonna be here? Okay. Oh, which cameras you looking at?
I know. Figured it looked pretty funny in the camera when everybody was down.
Pete, how are you?
Yeah, uh, Ben's communicating.
Ben X communicated. All right. My clock says six o'clock, so I'm gonna call the, uh, this meeting to order. It's the, uh, May 27th, 2025 Long Lake Township Planning Commission Meeting. Um, I'd like to invite everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, before we get into the items, I just wanna welcome everybody to our first Planning Commission meeting at the, the new hall. Um, I think everybody will find it, uh, the amenities to be top notch. We have a sound system. We're live streaming right now on YouTube, so just everybody be aware of that.[257.03][257.03](Laughter).
We will have.
Yes. If we don't have our microphones turned on, please turn them on. I think everybody should be on, so. Um, I'd also like to welcome our students to the meeting. I think, uh, they're trying to wrap up their credits for government class, so guys are cutting it close, but you'll get it under the wire, so. All right, moving on to a roll call, please.
Uh, Ryan.
Here.
Figura.
Here.
Seabird.
Here.
Murky.
Here.
Rashay.
Here.
And Paulson and Mont or Absent.
All right, um, next item is approval of the agenda. I guess before we get into that, I would suggest that we shift a few things around. Um, specifically move item seven A to, we'll make that nine A, and nine A becomes nine B. And then we would do seven B first, and then hold our public hearing for eight A. I'll second. That was a suggestion.
No, I'll make the motion.
Did you have? Okay. Uh, it's been moved by Kevin and supported by Sherry to adjust the agenda as noted. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so we'll conduct the business in that order then. Um, next item, conflict of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest for any of the items tonight? I guess I have to declare one for the public hearing for the applicant Grand Travers Bay YMCA, so when it gets to that one, I'll excuse myself. Seeing no other conflicts, we'll move on to our first public comment section. Um, anybody's, now's your opportunity to address us for three minutes on any of the items you'd like to talk about. We do have another opportunity during the public hearing for the YMCA to, if you'd like to speak then, specific to that item. So, name and address. Lloyd, we know you, but for the, for the record.
Lloyd Morris, eight one seven eight, Mearney Road. I can hear you. Now can you hear me? Okay, um, I would like to, well, that's weird. Uh, I would like to, uh, make a comment about the proposed ADU ordinance. This township has always, whether knowingly or not, looked at zoning from the purview of lakefront housing. There is a large amount of this township that is not lakefront housing. My ten acres could have been divided into five different lots, but because of zoning ordinance, it is non-conforming. In section eight point two of the new ordinance, it says minimum lot area is two acres, uh, for agriculture. Since under normal circumstances, I could divide my ten acres into five lots, can I have four ADUs? Section three point C states the ADU cannot exceed nine hundred square feet or exceed the floor area of the principal house. Does that mean if I have a total square foot of main house of fifteen hundred square feet, I can have an ADU that is over nine sixty but less than fifteen hundred? Section three point E says non-habitable space attached to an ADU is considered an accessory building subject to four point nine. Does an ADU get the same rights to accessory buildings that the main house gets? Can an ADU have two hundred square feet of a minor accessory building plus, as long as, you know, it's not detached, as, or a, um, major, one major accessory building? Section three point D states you cannot have more than two parking spaces. Why do you care how many parking spaces I have? If a residence, if the residents of an ADU have family over for Christmas, that means they have to park out in the street. This is, this one especially is an example of the township taking on over, taking away the property owner's rights. I feel that as this ordinance is very vague in certain areas, it will carry unattended consequences, it will make enforcement nearly impossible, and likely will end up in the courts. Thank you.
Thanks, Lloyd.
Yes, sir.
Pete Springsteen, thirty-nine twenty-nine Cedar Lake Road. I'd like to speak to the ADU, uh, as well, and just encourage you to, um, consider, um, going beyond the, I think, list of nine hundred and sixty square feet by right to have a conditional higher amount. You talked about different things, I know through the, through the time, thirty percent, thirty-five percent, forty percent, but have that be something that would have to come back to you for approval specifically if you exceed that, um, by right amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment at this period? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, approval of minutes from April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five meeting. Does anybody have any corrections or comments on the minutes?
I, I have a question regarding excused or absent. Um, in the, in the past, if you call into the township, it's considered excused. If you don't call in, my understanding is it's considered absent. Are we, uh, changing it? Because I missed one meeting in, over, what, two years here and now, so I guess I just need to know whether it's gonna be excused or, or absent.
Excuse, unexcused, or, uh, by law state that if you give a proceeding prior or by outside of time, you're either excused or, uh, you're not excused.
So, did you call in ahead?
I did. I called, I called in and sent a message with Heidi.
So we should just say absent and excused?
Yes, yes, please. I just want the, the course of what we're gonna do, you know, relative to, to all of us here, so, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Sure.
So, from a procedural clarification standpoint, I think you've adjusted that amendment and then failed to vote, and then I, um, suggested that you make a, another motion citing some documentation language that's all about zoning ordinance amendments having a duty for, uh, after the first clarification of the township agreement, that applies to, um, zoning ordinance amendments that comes through as an application for that type of, um, habitality, uh, planning commission, trespassing, uh, if you're, uh, if you're, uh, for that motion, uh, it's accurate in the minutes, but it's in the way it's saying, uh, you can, uh, uh, that, uh, and did that.
Okay, so the...
So the minutes are accurate.
Okay.
Procedurally speaking, the motion for the resolution failed, and then the secondary motion is not acceptable, uh, advised to be amended.
Gotcha. But the minutes are, are correct? Okay, gotcha. All right. Thanks for the clarification. So if there's, uh, no other changes, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
Is there, sir? It's a motion by Dennis and supported by Kevin to approve the minutes as amended. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, those minutes are approved. So now we are up to our first item of postponed business, which is, um, Mr. Faber's application. So, um, let me just, this item is conditional land use oh four dash twenty-five dash oh two and site plan review oh four dash twenty-five oh one. Request by applicant Peter Faber to develop a sixty-one unit site condominium as a subdivision without significant open space per section eighteen point four of the Long Lake Township zoning ordinance. The subject property is located in section ten of Long Lake Township in zone for low density residential. Parcel number two eight oh eight zero one zero dash zero two two dash zero two. Address is eight six six zero North Long Lake Road. So we had the public hearing last time, and now we're just back to go over the adjustments. So, uh, Cody, do you wanna?
I can talk. Um, this is weird. The applicant provided a supplemental map for you that was included in your packet, um, outlining their proposed, uh, natural features preservation mechanism for, um, the site condo. And so if you take a look at that map, um, I'll allow the applicant to clarify further, but the way I interpret is there's two orange lines that have been added to the site condo docs, or the site condo map. Uh, the dotted orange line shows the Long Lake Township natural features inventory. Um, it goes along the southern portion of the, um, it's page ninety-seven. Um, goes through the southern portion, kinda through unit forty-five, the unit fifty-six, then north to fifty-three, and then continuing east. So that's the natural features inventory boundary. The solid orange line is the proposed mechanism to save, um, those natural features in those respective units. The applicant goes further and lists out those distances, um, as well as displaying them visually on the map, so.
Thank you. Scott, Peter, do you guys wanna elaborate? I guess I, I see there's some other, um, notes identified on here about what's going on in the master deed and...
Yeah, at, at your request from last month's meeting, I, um, I apologize that that wasn't overlaid on there in the first place, just kind of an oversight on my part, but you got the priority two area overlaid on there now, and then the, the little report I put together, um, you know, spells out exactly the percentage of the priority two compared to the entire township, and it just kinda shows that it's a very small part of it, and, uh, also spells out the exact units that it's affecting, so you can see that area now. And then, um, you know, to, to help deal with that, we put additional restrictions beyond what we already had to preserve the back of those lots, um, in their natural state, where the condo documents, master deed, won't allow any, uh, tree clearing or earth moving in that area to help preserve that natural area. And, uh, yeah, and so that's all on there. If you, you know, I'm sure you've already read through all that, so I won't bore you with reading it again. Um, maybe more importantly, though, I'd like to just point out and remind you that this development's currently surrounded by developments all the way around it. Um, the one to the west has a density of, of less than an acre per unit. They're one acre lots, but it allows multifamily, has two to four families per acre, um, to the west. To the east, that subdivision, those lots are all like half acre and less that border us. And then probably more importantly, when these other subdivisions were approved, they were required by this board and the township to provide for outlots for future road use. And now we're being required to use those, and it's impossible to use those without going through this priority two area. So, any questions? Certainly able to answer those.
I have no new questions. I really appreciate the work you've done on this and being able to see the line over top. I see you've added the trees in on all the different lots and what you've done with the master deed. From my perspective of the things we looked at last time, I think you've addressed every single one of them, and you've got it detailed and outlined, so I, I thank you for doing the work and sorry it had to be another lap, but, um, I think, uh...
That's how these go.
That's how they go, but, yeah, I hate that it had to happen. But, but what you've done in coming back and, and not meeting what we want, but meeting what the plan, the master plan calls for in our ordinance, so I greatly thank you for putting time and detail.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I would make a motion to approve the conditional land use oh four two five oh two and SPR zero four two five oh one as presented and updated here today.
So, we have a motion by Kevin to approve conditional land use and site plan review in the same motion, in the same action. Um, conditional land use oh four dash two five dash zero two and site plan review zero four dash two five dash zero one, with support by Dan. Um, is there any further discussion?
I, I wanted to comment that I think as well that this has been updated appropriately, and, uh, you've worked in good faith and thank you for the time that you had to wait on that, but thank you.
Cody?
I was gonna say, before you, uh, go ahead, but...
I, I was gonna ask you if there's any, um, conditions we should attach that are...
I was just gonna mention that, um, typically in the past, and I guess advise, um, well, state law cites that we need to, um, cite a findings effect, so you can use any of the documentation that's been provided to you to cite a reason for approving the conditional land use. And then if you, um, approved with conditions, a typical stipulation that's put on these is, um, permitting from all outside agencies, so for some reason, they don't get road commission approval, they're not stuck between us saying they can do it and the road commission saying they can't do it. There's a cohesiveness between government units, so those are typical conditions that get put upon something like this.
That was kinda my, so I can amend, I can amend my motion, or do we need somebody to make a friendly amendment?
You can amend your motion.
I'll amend my motion to, I guess, maybe you wanna give me the exact terminology? I guess, Cody?
Give it a shot and see if you agree with it. So you're gonna amend your motion citing a findings effect found in your planning commission packet dated five twenty-seven twenty twenty-five, citing, uh, approval with conditions of, uh, CLU oh five two four oh two and site plan review oh four two five oh one on the condition that I'll allow outside agency approval and citing the, um, site plan dated, forgive me.
May first?
May first and four seven, so four seven will be the original site plan, may first will be the supplemental thing.
So I'm gonna take the easy way of doing this and say I amend my motion as Cody has outlined.
Is there support for the amended motion? So we have an amended motion by Kevin and support by Dan, as Cody described. Any further discussion on that? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carried. Thanks. All right, well now we are moving on to item eight A, which I will be recusing myself of, so I'm gonna turn it over to Dennis.
Okay. Uh, public hearing. CLU zero five two five zero three and SPR zero five two five zero two. A request by applicant Grand Travers Bay YMCA to operate a childcare center at Kensington Church located at eight sixty-eight hundred Secor Road, Traverse City, Michigan, four nine six eight five. The subject property is located in section twenty-four of Long Lake Township and is identified by parcel number two eight zero eight zero two four zero zero two zero one. Cody, I guess this is where we usually ask you to line things up for us here.
Yeah, of course. Um, so the subject site is zoned both ag and low density residential. The top northern half is zoned ag, the southern half is zoned low density residential. I, either way, a childcare center is allowed as a conditional use in both of those districts. Uh, the YMCA is approaching you to, um, occupy Kensington Church, which was originally Baypoint Church, which was constructed to be a church and a school when it was first built, uh, now currently just operates as a place of worship. They are coming to relocate from another building that they are losing their lease on, and their hope is to occupy their space to run a childcare center. Uh, under our current zoning ordinance, places of worship are exempt from, um, our zoning ordinance when it comes to childcare center unless the association with the operating entity is not the church. So because they're subletting the area, they have to go through a conditional land use process. Uh, those items are listed out here in section nineteen point thirteen that you've seen in the plumbing, uh, planning memo. Um, and because they are not proposing to move any dirt or make any substantial site changes, uh, actually I recommended to them not to come with an engineered site plan to save them some time and money, so they, um, are adequately showing us their intentions with the site plan that they have, but it's not stamped or engineered, so I wanted to preclude and say that that was staff recommendation to the applicant and not the applicant forgetting something, so. The applicant is here and I'll let them speak on their behalf, but before I do, just to explain a little bit, there's a proposed one-way traffic flow pattern that shows, um, coming in from either Secor or East Long and then, um, navigating through the church parking lot, uh, and their operating hours, hours are proposed to be eight to five with the highlighted rooms of the, um, old church site plan as what space they would occupy. So I guess with that brief overview, I'll leave it to the applicant to explain further.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm Andy Page, president and CEO of the Grand Travers Bay YMCA. As Cody had indicated, uh, we found out last year that we lost our lease at the existing facility that we, that occupies our child development center, which is a licensed childcare facility for infants, toddlers, and preschool-aged children. We have had that lease, uh, for several years, and it is due to expire on August thirty-first. Originally, it was due to expire in April. Um, we have approximately fifty young people that we serve in our CDC, uh, which again is a licensed childcare facility through the state of Michigan, and after long, uh, many attempts at finding a location that would be, um, capable of meeting the licensing requirements of the state, uh, we came across Kensington Church, um, and the facility meets all of our needs, um, as a childcare facility, and, um, we just ask that, uh, you folks take a look in, uh, approving the conditional land use.
I have a question for you. You're currently able to work with fifty children. Would this facility give you any more or less or change in that number? Do you anticipate a change?
You know, we looked at it from a licensing perspective, and there's a lot of things that deal with ratio and space. Um, we're at about fifty, but that particular facility would allow us to go as high as seventy-five.
Oh, okay. And you have intentions to work in that direction?
Yeah, we, we hope so. Um, you know, I think it's, everybody knows that the childcare, not only in this area but across the state, is, uh, there's significant need for that, so we are well positioned to take on, uh, more children, um, but obviously we have to go in with, with, uh, you know, the, the children that we have, but, uh, that is our intent, is to increase that enrollment as much as we can.
Excellent.
Any other questions or comments from? So, uh, we move into the, uh, public hearing, public comment. Is there anybody? Please, uh, state your name and address.
Uh, Terry Wilkins, twenty-four eighty East Long Lake Road. Concerns me, I know there's a big need for childcare, but we already have abundance traffic with the school and everything else on both those, and that intersection is very dangerous. That's what concerns me about the whole thing, is the excess traffic we're gonna get. There's a lot of, a lot of close calls down there on that intersection, so I don't know if there's something, I see they were surveying, I don't know if they're planning on, county road commission's gonna do something up there or not, but the site distance coming the site distance coming up Eastlong Lake to Secor is terrible. So, anyway, like I said, we already got enough high-speed traffic on that road. So, that's something that we might wanna think about.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Steve Samsel, 6931 Secor Road. We're essentially right across Secor, Secor from the church. My wife and I support the, the daycare going in. We do also have the same concern about traffic. I know we witnessed the surveying as well by the road commission, and we also know, or they've said that there is an intention to change the grade on that, yet this summer is one of their side projects and, or as far as the county road commission is concerned. I'd encourage you just to validate that that in fact is going to take place 'cause, and for exactly the same reason as, as he's stated, so, thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to address that?
Appreciate the concerns regarding the traffic. What I think is important to remember here is we will have approximately 60 cars throughout the course of the day. We start accepting children at 8:00 and they can go until 9:00. So, there is a lot of staggered cars that do come in between that hour and then all children have to be picked up by 5:00. But again, there's staggered pickup from, you know, noon till 5:00. So, the amount of cars that we're going to see at a maximum at any given time is maybe 10 to 15 cars. There'll be the staff that will get there ahead of time, obviously. We have a staff of about 11 or 12 folks. And as I said before, we have about 50, 50 children, but some of those children are also with the same family. So, we have siblings as well. So, I just wanted to convey that it is a very small amount of cars that will be going in and out.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, so we'll close, public comment, I guess supposed to give the time at 6:29. And deliberation by commissioners. Any questions?
What was the maximum of children that are gonna be attending?
I think they were, under their license would be able to go up to 75 in the future. Any questions? Any comments?
I've been to this church as well as the downstate Kensington. And this, this one-way in and out, is that gonna be coned off or, 'cause I can't remember the concept of, or barricades, are you putting barricades in?
No, there's, there's directional arrows in that particular parking lot. We could certainly do that if that, if that was something that we felt or you felt was necessary. We don't know who's gonna be coming from Eastlong Lake or who's gonna be coming from Secor, but we tried to, you know, create a circular motion in that traffic coming in and out to the drop-off, to the drop-off spot there. I can't tell you how long it took me to draw those arrows, by the way.
So, the drop-off point is the yellow area?
Yeah, so if you look at the yellow highlighted area, you can see right there where the, where it says drop-off, that's my amazing handwriting as well. And that is right in that parking lot area. And that is a drive-through that is, a driving area through that is used by the church as well. Obviously, we won't be there when the church is there for their services.
So, where you have parking written, is there anything in there or is that just all?
No, that's just parking lot.
So, there is parking where you have the word parking written in the front?
Yes. There's parking on both, yeah. But again, we wouldn't be using much of that. The only people that would be parking there would be, you know, the...
Staff.
Eight or nine staff members, yeah.
You may wanna consider putting the arrows in just for less confusion and...
Sure, yeah, we could certainly do that.
Everybody's in a rush.
I know. But again, as I...
For safety.
As I said, you know, with, we're over at Sojourn Church right now and we've never had any issues. That's obviously, it's off of 31, but the way that this particular service works is it's very staggered. Kids don't all come at once like school. They come at different times and it's designed by that, it's designed that way. So, you know, we, we never have a, we've never really had a surge of cars that are coming in at one time. You know, it's the eight to nine o'clock hours when those, you know, 40 or so kids, 50 or so kids, 40 or so cars based upon the, you know, the siblings that's kinda staggered throughout that time. Some get right there at 8:00 and some don't get there until right at 9:00.
So, I think what we're really hearing is safety is the concern, whether it's, you would be required to keep the one-way traffic flowing, so you'd need to make sure that that happened from a safety perspective. And the other piece, I mean, I hear the comments with the county road and the traffic, that's really not in our purview at this point to necessarily weigh in on this. The county road, it's obviously the facility's working as it is for the church and has permitted those driveway access points by the county. I'm not sure how much more we can weigh in to address that safety issue.
Kevin, can I touch on that real quick just 'cause I have some knowledge? After speaking with the county road commission earlier this year, we were informed that there's plans to shave the hill on Secor. So, if you're at Secor Eastlong intersection and you look to the east, there's kind of a higher elevation on Secor that comes through. Last we were told, and I don't have his job number to cite or anything like that, but last we were told the county road commission's working on shaving that hill down so to increase that site distance and make that intersection a little bit safer. So, that is what they informed us, whether or not they have shovels in the ground. Sounds like survey crews were out there from comments earlier, but we were told they were gonna be working on that either at some point in the summer to shave that down, so.
Okay. And, and the way the site is set up, excuse me, the way the site is set up, there's long driveways that accept a lot of traffic off the road. Those parking areas are for services, I would...
That's correct.
Believe on the weekend. So, there's, it's not like you're gonna be backing up onto the highway.
No. No, not at all.
Any other thoughts or?
I guess if I can get it right this time on the motion. We can put together the, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional land use 052503 and the special SPR 052502, conditional upon having proper licensing to operate the facility, which I believe you already have in hand, whether it needs to be updated with the new location, but proper licensing in place. I'd make a motion to approve, approve the, and, and based upon the finding of facts that we've reviewed relative to the parking in a one-way direction and the layout that is in compliance with everything else in our ordinance.
I'll support that motion.
Okay, so more, motion by Kevin and support by Sherry. You have what you need?
I think, could we reference the staff report as well? I think that might be...
I can make a friendly, a friendly adjustment to my motion to reference the staff report as part of the findings of fact. Is that what you're looking for, Tim?
That, that would cover it for me, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, we have motion to amend that. Support for that?
Can I amend the support, correct?
So, support by Sherry.
Support the amend.
Okay, being so, time to vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
All right. So, that means we are up to our pending business, which item 7B from the postponed business is the first item to review at this time. So, that would be, sorry, zoning ordinance amendment, which was the proposal to amend zoning ordinance number 109, section 2.7, section 3.2, section 4.28, in articles 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, 13, and 14 to regulate accessory dwelling units and create standards and design requirements for eligible properties. So, the last time we looked at this, we kinda delayed to make sure Kevin was in the loop and where the issues and didn't wanna send something to the board without his benefit of discussing it here with us. So, I guess, Cody, is there additional information included with this since last time?
Yeah, there's a few things. So, on the, I call it an insert, but the thing in the packet that shows the action item, it'll list the attachments that we've looked at before, but it also lists additional attachments. Commissioner Severt asked some questions and we included it in the packet so that the commissioners could review them before the meeting tonight. And then he also included some examples of AD ordinances. The only other thing I would add to your introduction is during our public hearing that was held in March, there was discussion about fixing a couple clerical errors in the zoning ordinance amendment as prepared and that would be under item 428-3E to read non-habitable space attached to a detached accessory dwelling unit and having that be subject to section 4.6. I had mistakenly put 4.9. So, those are the only other things I'd add to your introduction there.
Thank you. So, these, just so I'm understanding correctly, these questions are yours, Kevin?
Yes, they are. You want me to?
Yeah, I guess we can, I guess however, I don't, I don't mind going through them if you wanted to kinda go through them and...
Yeah, my, my thought was, obviously, I had questions and first I wanna say thank you to everybody who worked on this leading into it. There's a lot of work put together to get to this point. I'm guessing some of my questions, since I was not a part of that or relating to, you've already addressed them and you have, there's reasons and thoughts behind it and maybe others we need to talk about a little bit further. I, I do wanna make sure we devote enough time to this topic so we get it right. I mean, ADUs I think are wanted in our community. I also think ADUs have been challenging for different communities, so I think we really need to take the time to get this right rather than trying to move through too rapidly. I did find a few things that I was concerned with as I looked at it, you know, no particular order. This was as I went through. At a time, I just started making questions and things in my mind and then I was asked, geez, can you present that ahead of time? So, I thought, well, I don't have a lot of time, I'm gonna send out what my mind, you know, puked out on a sheet of paper here. So, there's no, not necessarily any rhyme, reason, or prioritization of what's here, just topics to touch on. And maybe these would bring up other thoughts and comments. I also, in substantiating some of my questions, I pulled some ordinances from, and it should be included in the packets, some things that I found from communities of Holland, Traverse City, East Grand Rapids, Zealand, and they were just kinda random. As I did searches to find different topics, things I had questions on, those popped up with word searches that matched, so I took a look to see what they had. So, neither these are best case or things I'm proposing or suggesting, just references where other communities are doing, you know, things on some of the areas that I've questioned. So, if that helps explain what I have here, so, I'll leave that to you if you wanted to start going through these, Bob, or...
Yeah, I guess we can just, let's start at the top, I guess, like, I don't know, Cody, if you have any, anything to jump in with as we go through, I mean, that's more than, more than welcome to do that. I did, I think the committee was Dan, Dennis, and Max, correct? Okay. And Max isn't here, but I think, just so everybody's aware of who the, who was on the committee that came up with this, but yeah, so, building code-related topics, I don't know that that's, I guess I always defer to them as handling that.
So, I, I guess my question there is, as I look through ours and I look through other communities, or some communities are very specific that they want utilities hooked up specifically to the main dwelling unit. Others are very specific, they don't wanna hook up to the main dwelling unit and I notice we don't touch on it. So, I'm thinking, well, what are we missing here that, you know, we either are, we're, we're mum on that, or other communities that have been very specific, whether they're separate meters or same meters. And I grouped into here septic inspections because clearly, that's important in our area. We're not hooking up to city, any city infrastructure other than, you know, anything that might happen now in the far northeast corner, I suppose. But outside of that, and we, we've been out on the front side in our community, in our township with what we've done with septics. Grand Traverse County's, I'm sure you're all aware, just recently passed something. Another topic we should probably circle back to in terms of a little bit of overlap now between what they're doing and we're doing and redundancy, but, you know, not necessarily a topic for now, but I think we should come to grips with separately. But in any case, I, I think those areas, other communities have addressed these things and we seem to be quiet on those things. I don't know if we are for a reason or we didn't dive in or, just so we have a reason for...
Would you be interested in discussing them?
Absolutely, yes.
The utilities hookup, typically, the utility's gonna require separate... I know I have a soft voice. Typically, the utilities are gonna require separate hookups and I don't know that that's something that we need to be involved in. There may be situations in which an ADU is added onto a house and they would probably use the same meter then, but I think we're probably best off to leave that up to the utilities policies. Separate meters is kinda the same issue. The septic inspection, whenever you add a bedroom, there's gonna have to be an increase in the size of the septic tank and drain field, which is gonna generate its own inspection. And that, so, whenever a bedroom is added, there's gonna have to be a health permit involved. So, once again, I don't really think that's our purview unless you have a different opinion about that.
No, I'd, I just know that when, yeah, when somebody goes to add on, you know, increase the usage of the property, that the health department will, I mean, that's always a condition of building permit is that they, before they issue a building permit, they'll see that the health department has reviewed it and issued a permit, so...
And there's gonna be a, a land use permit involved also. So, there's, there's quite a bit of oversight just aside from what the zoning ordinance is gonna require.
And would the septic, I mean, currently, when there's a transaction on a property in this township, an inspection is required. If you're just gonna add on, as long as the gallons would meet, do they actually require an inspection at that time or should we be requiring an inspection now as well or would that automatically get caught if a bedroom's being added on?
Well, if, if, if there's a land use permit and a building permit, the, the building permit cannot be issued until the health department has either signed off or issued a permit. And if somebody's adding a bedroom, there's going to be a new, a new permit and in addition, either in addition to the drain field and a septic tank or a new drain field, a new septic tank. So, that's really covered and I...
Other than whether we require an inspection, I guess, my thought is, we've been really good at requiring inspections. Many communities haven't had a transaction. This would also be a significant activity taking place should we require an inspection to occur in terms of on the main house, if you say we're gonna, if we're gonna do a separate ADU, we're gonna put in a separate septic building, that, that could all be permitted. We might not end up with an inspection for the main. Should we be doing that at this time? Should we not? Is this an opportunity?
I think I would ask for Cody's advice on that. The, the ordinance that requires an inspection on sale is a separate thing and I don't know that, you know, there's really no change of ownership when you add an ADU, so, I defer to Cody on that.
Yeah, currently, there's two things you're referring to. One is that when you get a building permit from the county, they have their own metrics as far as approving your septic. The other item that you're referring to is our... The other item that you're referring to is our time of transfer ordinance, which is ordinance 107, and it's been amended a few times, most recently in 2019 by 172. And what that constitutes is when there's a time of transfer, and it defines the term sale, so forgive me, but for lack of depth, when there's a sale of a property, we require that the property owner purchase a septic inspection from a registered inspector that will go through a form worksheet and actually go out in the field, dig up the septic, inspect it, make sure it's in working order, and then we tell the, or ask the seller to provide themselves with a copy, us with a copy, and the buyers with a copy. And if there's any issues with the septic inspection, we will take that issue and send it to the county for mitigation of those issues, so...
So I guess my question is, is it too burdensome or appropriate to say, if you're going to do something as significant as an ADU, does it trigger section 107?
Well, there's two separate ordinances. So the septic inspection ordinance is what they call a police power ordinance. So it's something that's instituted and enacted by the township board. Zoning ordinance, currently, we don't, not to my knowledge, have any reference to that in the zoning ordinance as it stands now. And though we can reference other ordinances, we would, I see what you're asking. I don't know how we'd get the exact verbiage to enact that, but as it stands right now, that other ordinance doesn't really apply to the zoning ordinance as amended as we're talking about it.
But we, but we could require in this ordinance that that would be...
Sure, you just add a line that says, required to follow the septic inspection ordinance of 172 as amended.
And again, I'm not sure that needs to be done. I'm just, have we talked about it? Is that an appropriate time? I guess I'm thinking where we've got septic systems in the township, this is an opportunity where it's a significant activity that's going to take place. Is that another opportunity, just as a transaction of a home, to say, hey, if you're actually going to put another structure on, let's make sure, even if you're going to have it separate, let's make sure what you have for the last 25 years is actually working properly and functioning. Is it an opportunity to consider that? Because it may or may not tie into it, but just swoop it up and catch it.
My opinion is it would be redundant, and I'm not sure that we're, I mean, basically what we would be doing is using the ADU ordinance as a reason to get somebody to inspect their own septic tank. There's not, you know, on sale, there's a liability that they may be passing along, and the inspection is justified there. I'm not sure that, it's probably legal, but to me, it seems like a bit of overreach. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, and I wasn't sure as it went through my mind, that's why I thought, and that's what I wanted to get opinions, do we think it is right? And I guess, but you're saying if you tap into the existing one, then that's going to be identified, or would the county say, hey, yours is large enough, go ahead and tap in, but it might not be working, right?
Well, the county would require an inspection regardless.
Okay.
If you're going to add a bedroom, there's going to be an inspection. And the likelihood that they would be able to use the existing drain field without adding to it is really minimal. Very few builders are going to oversize the drain field. Very few buyers want to spend that money.
Sure. Yeah, I think, just to add, you know, the adding living space to a dwelling is going to trigger a review by the health department, where, so I mean, they're going to be there looking at it, you know, they're going to do their own inspection, say, you know, you need to be brought up to snuff, so I'm comfortable that it, you know, that's addressed, just by virtue of the health department issuing, you know, reviewing and issuing a permit for expand, for saying addition.
You guys deal directly in this, so you know better than I, that's why I'm asking the question.
But I appreciate the due diligence, because, you know, there's, we shouldn't leave any stone unturned.
We could word it as in compliance with the Grand Traverse Health Department criterias or something. Why would, I think it would behoove us to do that, put a lot of teeth into it.
Sure. Yeah, that might be a good approach. I mean, you're saying it's going to happen anyway, but no reason our ordinance couldn't state.
Yeah, there's no reason the ordinance couldn't state it, but the enforcement's going to come from the county, not from us.
Sure.
Hey, Kevin? Just one second. When, so, not to confuse, but if, say, you were going to finish your basement, and you came to me with a permit that you want to add two bedrooms in your basement, we do exactly what Dan says. I won't issue the land use until the health department says that septic can have those two extra bedrooms. I look at it as the same way if someone's adding an ADU, it's going to be the same process. So we don't make people, if they're adding a bedroom, get their septic inspected, if they're finishing their basement and adding two bedrooms, it's kind of the same thing, in my opinion, I guess, so just, that's how it works. We won't even issue a land use without that. And then the county is also going to police it too, so you'll have two entities that'll make sure that that septic is sized correctly, so...
But it would be sizing correct, and not necessarily making sure it's functioning correctly.
Yeah, I don't think they come out and do an inspection, they just make sure it's sized properly.
So that would still be the piece that could be missed, I guess. So I guess, if that's the case, I guess that puts me back to thinking, if you're going to tap into that existing with an ADU, maybe we should require an inspection, because otherwise, all the county's going to do is make sure it's sized right.
But would you then do that when anybody adds a bedroom, then? It's kind of the same thing.
Kind of, but not, to me, when you're adding a separate dwelling, you know, you're talking sinks, bath, I mean, you're a whole nether living unit tapping into, that's more significant than, I need another bedroom for my kid.
Yeah, I, my understanding is that if you, if somebody adds a bedroom and you issue a land use permit for it, the health department has to sign off on it first, and they're going to, and if you just enlarge a drain field, they're going to come out and inspect that drain field when it's enlarged, they're going to look at the whole situation. I think that it's, it's a, it's a standard that's well enforced in Grand Traverse County in particular, and I really think that to put it in our zoning ordinance, ordinance, number one, be redundant and take on an enforcement action that really isn't our purview.
So maybe we go back to Sherri's comment of having it as compliant with county health department.
Right, and that's ensured through the land use, which is going to be...
Currently, in the draft ordinance language in 428, 2D, it says, ADU shall be connected to a community wastewater and waste, or water and wastewater system, or such private facilities approved by the Grand Traverse County Health Department. So that would be your line item, that deals with septic.
Yeah, I think the heart of your question is, do we use it as an opportunity to exist, to inspect an existing sanitation facility that isn't going to be affected? But to me, I think that's overreach.
I agree with you. I think, I mean, we probably have covered what we need to have covered, and if it's a one-bedroom, it might be sized right and everything slides through, but likely not, and likely it'll be a two-bedroom type thing if it's a separate dwelling, in any case, speculating what it'll end up being here.
Yeah, even if it's, even if it's a one-bedroom, a one-bedroom is going to require an upgrade of the system, period. There's no way around that.
Unless it was sized right to begin with, sized up.
If that, really? I'm impressed. Most people do not. I rarely encountered it, but thank you.
Okay. So I'm satisfied with topic one, unless anybody else had other thoughts. Another item that came up, moving on to item two, architectural standards, I found several of them that spoke to making sure standards were maintained within the, in the neighborhoods, and some of them were referencing, you know, whether it's three elements of the design, I mean, you know, and again, you know, this is, I guess, if you're in a neighborhood where everything is brick, and it's a certain style, and you're going to find three elements, I'm just using that as an example of, how do we make sure there's going to be some consistency so you don't end up with a, you know, a pole building in somebody's backyard that, you know, the entire rest of the neighborhood is, you know, Mr. Faber's going to build here, or he's currently doing, all of a sudden you get a pole building out back, as we said, it was okay to have something entirely different.
Well, I would say that in most cases, let the property owner do what they want, but when, when you're in an area where there's covenants, then that's something that maybe we need to put in there, that if it's in a, like a condominium developed neighborhood with covenants, that it meets the covenants, as far as architectural. Some neighborhoods do have some review boards and some don't, I guess, but otherwise, I think we might be telling people too much what they can do, can't do.
Or can we stay, from a standpoint of being similar, I don't, we don't want to get into looking at three elements, I don't think, but can we just at least state that it would be similar to the neighborhood design and architecture, I guess, so...
Cody, I thought we addressed that, requiring some architectural similarity, similarity to at least the existing structure. Is that in there?
I remember discussing it briefly at the ad hoc meeting. I don't believe that we put any language in the draft ordinance that would reflect that.
I agree, I think that's important. I, I think that it at the very least should reflect, or at least aesthetically integrate with the existing buildings on the property.
The way that, I hear what you're saying, just to flesh it out a little further, the way that that would work day to day is you would be leaving it up to the zoning administrator to make that determination whether or not something meets that part of the zoning ordinance, because it's a permitted use, so it wouldn't come in front of this board, it would come to the permitting agent, which would be the zoning administrator, and they would be the one identifying whether it was consistent with the surrounding homes or not. Real briefly to add to that, Dennis, you mentioned about HOAs or covenants. The township does not enforce HOAs or covenants between neighbors, they enforce that themselves. That doesn't involve the township, so we can't address it from that standpoint. But if you were to put something in the zoning ordinance where you were relating it to an architectural standard that we do have to enforce, then it would be up to the permitting agent at the time of permitting to check that box.
That brings up a couple of questions for me. Number one, this, this determination of whether it's aesthetically proper or not falls on one person's shoulders, and that could be a real point of contention. Do we want to put our zoning administrator in that position? Second thing is, I know that there are going to be a lot of HOAs that have bylaws that will prevent this from happening, period. Most HOAs, in fact.
So, like in my situation, if I were to do an accessory dwelling unit, it would be probably about 300 feet away from the present house, and I wouldn't want to build another log home. Okay? So I don't know. If this is, we have so many varying lots in this community, and I can't imagine somebody adding on to their home and they're going to make it a different architecture, so I don't.
And I guess my thought is not so much, if you got a log home, you better make a log ADU. I think it's just being something consistent, what you don't, to me, what you don't want is, you know, if the neighborhood's all natural materials being used in all the homes, there's a certain look and feel that's happening, all of a sudden a pole barn goes up, and this is my ADU, I think I've got concern with that, just for the neighborhood. So maybe it's, you know, can it, does it need to be matching what's on the home or just in the neighborhood? I mean, so as long as it's consistent with what's there, so if you've got somebody in the neighborhood who's working with a, you know, vinyl site at home, then you're going to have an opportunity for a vinyl site, because it's not going to be inconsistent with what's in the neighborhood.
Yeah, but again, in our neighborhood, there's all kinds of architecture, and...
And so in that situation, you've got a lot of latitude, another neighborhood might have as much latitude.
But what about it becoming part of an AD, a part of a pole barn? It could be part of a pole barn.
In that case, the pole barn's already there and existing, so must already be in the neighborhood.
Not necessarily.
Oh, so you're saying, yeah, so you're saying, and so then, to me, that comes back to the architectural design, then make that have a proper appearance, as opposed to, you know...
That's a wide open question, which's proper.
That's a tough one. Legally, can we even do that? I mean, with a, with a, with a private organization like an HOA, you can do that. Can you do that as a zoning?
You can have forum-based zoning, so the example I always use is Frank and Muth's, just because it's the most identifiable. They have forum-based zoning, so all of their buildings look Bavarian in nature. Speaking from our zoning ordinance and the typical history of Long Lake, I don't, off the top of my head, can't think of anywhere in our zoning ordinance that we currently regulate materials used on any sort of building. We say, as long as it meets county's construction code, you can build whatever style you'd like. So it would be a feature that would be unique to ADUs if you choose to incorporate that.
I think we'd be creating a lot of problems for ourselves to do that, to have architectural standards. I think the building code is what's important. Does it function properly?
Well, I guess as I look, and from the surface, I see that, but when I look across, again, how I, I approach this differently. I don't have a personal interest in one, I'm just trying to look at for the community, so I don't want to build a pole barn one, I don't want to build a log harm. I'm, what is the community going to be happy with? And so as I did the search, other communities have gone in and tried to, and actually have applied, you know, that it needs to be architecturally up to, and including one that was specifically that, in the entire township, has to have up to three elements. I mean, so there are those who get protective of it, and my concern is if we're talking ADUs, and people, on one hand, the purpose is to have housing that's more affordable, and we can accommodate lower-income folks with housing that they can afford, I think we want to be careful not to whip saw it so far that we end up with unintended consequences, and suddenly we have neighborhoods with small little pole barns built that, you know, some builder came up with this concept that it's very inexpensive to pop in, build, and pop this thing in for you, and here's the revenue you're going to make off of it, and those are things I think we need to be cautious of. I mean, I think those things can happen. We're a community extremely close to Traverse City, where housing is a big challenge there. There's, between the tourism pressures and workforce pressures for the service industry, we are as close as you can get, and I think there will be, you know, as the comment was made by somebody here, you know, potentially unintended consequences if we're not careful in getting this put together correctly. And so I think we need to be cautious, slow, and careful, and not just open the door so wide so quick. We can, in my opinion, on these things, we can keep opening the door wider and wider as we learn, but if we've opened it too wide to begin with, that becomes a problem. So I'd rather proceed with caution, because communities have had problems in this area. There are best practices that do address this. I think I agree with Dan, this is a, this is a tough one. I, maybe we, for the sake of the night, we kind of keep going through and put this one, circle it, and say, maybe we need to come back and have a little more thought, conversation, and research on it to, to see if there's a way to not be too burdensome on our property owner to be able to do what they want to do with their property, but also not cause a problem in the community within neighborhoods, because we didn't think something through well enough, and suddenly we're scratching our head, wondering why these ugly sites are suddenly popping up at 900 square feet, and they're dropping in like cookie cutters that people aren't going to like.
And we have to remember, this is going to affect every parcel of property in the township.
Well, that's a good point.
Our neighbors.
I mean, so you think at this point, we just approved, you know, tonight, Mr. Faber's project, that's a low-density neighborhood, one-acre lots, 61 parcels. We had people that came in on a prior meeting that were concerned with the number, thinking it was condos, misunderstanding it was going to be large numbers. There was very quickly concern that there was going to be too many people, too many homes, too many structures. The way our current draft ordinance reads, so we're clear, we just approved 61, we might have just approved 122, because every one of those could have an ADU under the current draft ordinance we have, and they could be pole barns, if we're not going to address it. So those are the things I think that we have at risk to think about. Now, do I really think all 61 lots are going to buy them and go in and do that? No, but somewhere in between zero and something is going to happen, and we need to think about the implications of that. I mean, that's going to be issues on the infrastructure, infra's on the roads, and there's going to be issues with the traffic that we've heard. So there's a lot of pieces that can become pretty quick and remind you, we're a walking distance practically from Traverse City, so the pressures on our community are going to come. And appropriately, if we can accommodate, I think it's wonderful, but how do we balance it as we move forward, and recognizing what the risk is, as by example of the, what we just approved right next door tonight?
Yeah, you're example of a, of an enterprising builder that develops a bunch of little tiny homes, and, I mean, we've had presentations about that, and then those people are promoting a really quality product, but that doesn't mean that everybody will. So I think it's an important thing to think about.
I think the difference between an accessory structure here is that an accessory dwelling unit is a potential income generator, I guess. I mean, you were kind of bringing that up, at least for monthly rentals, that's something where there could be, it could be profitable for someone to put one in, which... for someone to put one in, which is not true for a pole barn generally. Because I don't think we allow people to rent out space in a pole barn, I would, I would think. I don't think that's allowed in the township.
That's actually not, I mean, you can build a house using a pole barn structure.
They're a thing now.
Barn dominium.
Oh, yeah, sure. I guess, but what I mean is, what I mean is that we don't have, we don't have those requirements for accessory structures, though. And you're right, you could build a house and make it look like a pole barn. But if somebody's building a pole barn, we don't really care what it looks like, or whether it looks like Frankenmuth, or, you know, we don't care about any of those things. So if we were putting it on for accessory dwelling units, I would think that the income is probably the reason we'd be doing that, is that there's some reason why people want to build these that's maybe not to put stuff in. I don't know. I'm just, I'm trying to think of why they're different than accessory structures, or to your point, even primary dwellings. Why is it even different from a primary dwelling where we don't have these standards? And I guess that's maybe it. Maybe it pays for itself, and so it's a free, easy thing for people to put up, and we don't, don't want them to look like, we don't want them to look like number seven on Kevin's list.
Well, it's, you know, and if it's a point of conversation here on this board, you know it's going to be in the township at large.
So what I just did was circled number two, thinking we need to have some more conversation circled back.
Yeah.
Because I don't know if we're going to resolve it right now. But I thought for the sake of time, if we want to maybe move through the other topics and circle, to me, I crossed off one because I think we seem to collectively get to that. Number two, I left circled.
I think it might be worthwhile to check with East Bay and Traverse City and Grand Haven or wherever the other one was, and just see how the implementation of those standards has gone.
Sure. Yeah, to actually get some feedback from them on what they're finding working, not working, and difficulty to enforce. We clearly don't want to put a whole lot more on the staff to go out and start enforcing some difficult to enforce items. The next one I have on the list, again, no particular, size. I see the sizes that we put in, but just a question I had because I do see differences in some other communities. As opposed to a fixed number, why wouldn't we look at a percentage? I understand if we're doing an ADU, the concept and thought is it's something subservient to the primary residents. I get that. But we have some folks that have thousand-square-foot homes and a lot that can handle a 960. We have some folks that might have five acres and a 5,000-square-foot home. Would we not want to, would it almost be silly to have a 900 square foot next to that? Or would we consider, is there a time and a place for something a little bit larger that maybe is a percentage of the primary home? Again, I don't think if you're going to put a 2,000 square foot, you're probably talking about have another lot and do another home. So I don't know the number, but other communities had percentages. Other communities let numbers go up as high as 1,200 square feet, 1,500, I think I may have found. So I don't, I guess my question is, how do we get to that 960? Do we, is there any reason to give a, something that's proportionate rather than just a fixed number? Because on one hand, I'm thinking you're going to have some lives with a 960 and a 900, and then another lot you might have 5,000 and 900. Should we have something more proportionate? Is it reasonable to be something more proportionate? Or is there a reason 960 is the magic number, and here's why that makes all the sense in the world? I don't know.
Our original conversation was to limit it, or to allow an ADU to be half the size of the, of the main house. And there was quite a bit of a conversation around that. And I don't know actually how we ended up at 960. I, you know, obviously, there's a minimum size in the township.
Yeah, the metric 960 itself is a minimum for a principal dwelling unit. So I think the thinking or the convention was that if ADU is 960 or less, it's going to be smaller than any principal dwelling because the principal dwelling has to be at least 960 or greater. The ratio idea was discussed at length at the ad hoc committee multiple times. And this single metric with an above or below kind of mechanism was what was reached, I guess, is the reason why we have it. And the 960 is because of the existing metric of a principal dwelling.
So under that, under that metric, an ADU has to be 960 square feet, not more, not less, right?
No, or less. It can't be greater than 960 is how it is ordered.
But the minimum, minimum size for a dwelling is 960, isn't it?
For a principal dwelling, yeah.
Okay.
I think the minimum for this was 250. That's, is there a?
That's what the current draft language says, yeah.
Okay.
And just to throw one more wrench into this whole conversation, sorry to do this on you, but I was rereading through this today and was trying to poke holes in it. And one of the other items that we have in our district regulations is there's a minimal, minimum living, minimal, minimum living floor area dimension, and that is 24 foot by 24 foot. So if somebody builds a principal dwelling in the township, they have to have a section of the livable floor area that's at least 24 foot by 24 foot. If we were to enact the ADU ordinance language as it's currently written, that would mean that an ADU would have to have a minimum floor area livable of 24 by 24. So when we're talking about sizing in particular, keep that in mind as if you want to allow a smaller than 560, whatever 24 times 24 is, then we need to make sure we add that language in. Or if you want to add, keep that as the minimum, we can adjust as necessary. But just to throw one more wrench in the size conversation.
I don't think 576 is unreasonable for a minimum. That's a pretty small house.
But that means you're saying the main floor would have to be 24 by 24. So even if you're putting an addition on your main home for an ADU, you're going to be 24 by 24?
If you're putting an addition, attached addition onto an existing principal dwelling, then that regulation wouldn't apply because your principal dwelling already would have fallen under that 24 by 24 core living area.
So the attached, an attached ADU could then be a bit smaller, what we're discussing?
Well, it would have to meet whatever minimum you set for it.
Okay.
But as it's written currently, an ADU would look more like an addition to a house instead of a standalone unit.
I think that if we increase the minimum to 576, it might solve some problems of having a bunch of little prefab units dropped all over the place.
Yeah, it's a pretty large, tiny home on wheels. So maybe reconsider the minimum, but then any thought to reconsidering the upper then at that point, or percentages? Are there thoughts or opinions from?
I think, I think we revisit the whole thing as far as size. Look, you know, we can.
There's a lot of issues that need to be addressed still.
No, but with size, I mean, that's, that's been a question. It's been brought up a few times here. So if we're looking at size, then we look at it at both ends of it.
Both ends. And then the other piece I had listed there is 3A, again, from one of the communities I looked at, was concerned with how much was roof space. So they, you know, got into how much of impervious. On one hand, we're talking 24 by 24 minimum, but that's going to have a roof that's going to be more than 24 by 24. You could also do a two-story.
Yeah.
And have less roof space, you know. So I don't know if that was even given thought on terms of how much space we're going to take up within a lot?
I don't think we have any lot coverage limits in this township. We did have them years ago, and in 2010, they were removed. So, but that was not dealing with ADUs.
And so I don't know the history of that, or why that'd be an interesting thing to understand. And I'm not saying that it needs to be or didn't. It's just, I'm finding others looking at it, you know, and I understand.
Well, the reason it happened was, we did have those lot coverage limits. And Settlers Cove, somebody wanted to do a suite for the in-laws, and it went above the lot coverage limit that was in place. And then the Board of Trustees asked the Planning Commission to come back erasing that lot coverage limit. So that, you can look into it, Cody. It was 2010. So we don't, they were just negated for the whole township. So we don't have them now. And I think if you're going to go lot coverage limits, then we don't have them for main dwellings, principal dwellings.
Right. And by and large, because of our setbacks, it's probably not as big of a concern when it's a single dwelling. But now if we're going to put a second dwelling on the same lot, you're going to have a lot. And again, I'm not saying it needs to be considered, but it should be thought about if we want to have that.
Well, the outcome of that one was, people went back and redesigned it. The township wanted to give them relief, but they went back and redesigned, said, no, we're fine. So I don't see where that's been a problem. Okay, but I, yeah, with the, we don't have it. It could be a problem here and there. I don't think so. I haven't seen it be a problem.
I think that would be more likely to be a problem in a, in a dense urban area. You know, if we're talking about covering a lot with impervious surface, I just don't think that's an issue in our neighborhood.
We're requiring a one-acre minimum lot to do this anyway, so you're not going to, so it may not become a concern because of the size of the lots we're working with for ADUs. But I just don't know if it'd been looked at, and should we make sure there's not a scenario where it doesn't become a problem? From the top of my head, maybe not. I just grabbed it because I saw and said, have we talked about it? Should we talk about it?
I think a percentage on the, on the limits of the ADU, based on the house size, is a, you know, we had a lot of conversation about that. And there, you know, I don't think there was ever a consensus. There was a vote. But I think it's worth considering, particularly considering some of the input that we've had.
Real quick, just to clarify, Kevin, you mentioned that we require, under the current proposed ordinance, required acre lot. It's not exactly how it works. A lot of our districts have an acre lot minimum, but it references the district as having the minimum. So like Ag would require two acres because that's what the, so it has to be conforming to the current zoning ordinance lot areas, how it's worded, so.
Thank you. I was relating it back to Lake District with one acre. Okay, so we need to, so I think we need to look further at two and three. The fourth one I have, let me see what I have there. As proposed, single-family lots, meeting 4.2A, 2A. So what I'm doing here is referencing our current draft ordinance. Are there, so my question is, with all the wording there, you have to, I guess, go through and pull it up. To cut to the chase, are there conditions where lots exceeding certain sizes, say twice the minimum of the area? So as Cody just outlined, maybe if you're in the Lake District, as example, because I was just representing in my own mind, you've got a three-acre lot, can you have more than one ADU? If you've got enough property that otherwise could be divided into three one-acre lots, is there a reason to, and I'm just asking the question. I, I'm not a fan of ADUs in general. So I'm not saying let's get a whole bunch of them out there, but I'm just asking.
I think that would basically allow a person to subdivide without subdividing. I think that would be a slippery slope.
So I guess let me just ask the question. So I understand subdividing and the reasons we do. What's the downside? So if somebody has, so I've got 10, I don't. But if I have 10 acres, and I've got a primary home on it, I'd really like to kind of create an estate-type setting, bring my mother into one, bring my in-laws into one. I've got enough property. Otherwise, I could, you know, meet the minimum here of low density of one-acre lots. Is there a reason I can't put two or three on my property? Particularly if I space them out enough so someday I could subdivide off and sell it. But right now, I don't want to. Right now, I want it all under one tax ID. I want to keep it one straight property. I'm going to make sure I've got, everybody can be one acre so someday all my family dies and I can sell these things off. What's the downside to that?
I think the downside to it is that it really allows for unregulated development. The reason that we have site condo laws and PUD laws is so that the township can have some say in how the, how development is handled in the township. If you look at townships that have had unregulated development, it turns into a mess pretty quickly. And I think that would be not good for the township.
But would we not be regulating it through an ADU ordinance that was specific enough to accommodate the things that we want to regulate?
From my perspective, that, that puts a lot of weight beyond the goal of the ADU ordinance. I think that, I think that's tricky.
I'm comfortable with the answer. I just wanted to ask the question.
Sure. I'm happy to give the answer.
Yeah, I think we're, we're then starting to get into like creating loopholes to the zoning ordinance that are unintended. So I, I think one ADU per parcel is good. That's my opinion.
Since generally, I'm not a fan of ADUs, but understand the reason for them, I'm perfectly fine with it. But I wanted to ask questions on each side of my own thoughts.
It's good to be, play devil's advocate on all the points.
This, I, this one, I think I already know an answer to, but I, to use an ADU, so we've stated that the, in our current draft ordinance, says that one dwelling is intended for the owner, one dwelling is intended for long-term rental or family use, but not short-term rental. So my mind jumps to, to use, to have an ADU, can we require that it be a homesteaded property? I mean, that's the easiest way to know if the owner's there, is it homesteaded or not. But I guess I'll let Cody.
Yeah, we asked legal about that when we brought the original draft ordinance to them. They mentioned that the Zoning Enabling Act doesn't allow us to determine a different class of ownership when we write a zoning ordinance. So we can't treat PRE owners different than a non-PRE owner. So we have to treat them the same by district. So we're not allowed to say that you have to have a PRE on the property. PRE is Principal Residence Exemption. It's commonly called homesteading or homestead.
And I guess conceivably, you could have somebody who's made their primary residence in Florida, but also has a home up there that's their own. They're here six months of the year, there six months of the year, but they're using their PRE down there.
True.
But still in compliance because the primary home or the secondary home is what they're using to live in. So I guess that there's a, there's a, there's an avenue for a non-PRE property to be being used properly with one home still being used for an owner. I'm just not sure how we fully enforce, is the owner using both, or using one?
Yeah, and I know that was a point, an uncomfortable point for some of the people who talked at our previous meetings. And I don't think there's an easy answer for it.
And even if it is homesteaded here, the snowbirds go to, you know, Florida, the warmer areas. Doesn't mean they wouldn't rent the property out and the AUD. So that brings in another set of problems, potentially.
Yeah, one, one of the people that presented was concerned that they had a neighbor who lived in California, and they were concerned they would rent out both of these units. And the ensuing discussion was, how does the township determine or enforce habitability? Because that, that puts the township in the position of peeping in on people and making sure that they're living in their house. That's, I don't think the township wants to be in that position.
So I appreciate, I appreciate and like the idea that our ordinance requires homeowner to be in one for all the reasons that happens when you have an owner on site, or at least on site half the year, or whatever that would be. But it's the same question, how, how do you enforce it? How do, how do we handle that? Staff, how are you going to, staff, how are you going to handle?
With any zoning ordinance, I mean, we strive for compliance, right? I mean, we have our methods for enforcement. Something like this, obviously, we're not going to be able to have the bandwidth to go check every property that has an ADU and see if somebody's living in it daily. I mean, that's not going to happen. One of the methods that we could use to check is if the house is under ownership of an LLC, then potentially there's not an owner residing, or so on and so forth. But whenever a zoning ordinance is created, enforcement's always a question how it's going to be upheld. And we try, as a planning and zoning department, to strive for compliance, and we put a lot of trust in our residents to be able to follow the rules. When we see that they're not being followed, we, we hold them up to the, the letter of the book, so.
But there, there could be a case in which a property is owned by an LLC that is a trust.
Sure. It makes it very difficult.
So here's another.
Sorry, the last thing I'd say about that, that that line of the owner shall reside in either the principal or the ADU is a common line in regulation in all the draft language that we looked at across the board for the ad hoc committee. So that is a fairly normal place as far as actually upholding that. I don't know that any other entity is doing that on a, you know, 100% basis, or.
I think it sets a standard, though.
Agreed. So just to come to the, come back to the question, you know, the neighbors concerned that.
that their neighbor lives in California, rents, is gonna rent out both units, that wouldn't be allowed under this ordinance draft, correct? Because they don't live, they don't reside in the principal or the accessory.
If you're long-term renting both the principal and the ADU for 12 months of the year, then yeah, that does not fall under. If you get to the question, if you are long-term renting the ADU and the principal dwelling unit, you live in it four months out of the year, but ten, math, eight months out of the year, you're long-term renting it, then I guess the question becomes, what is your definition of living in the unit?
Well, it also becomes an issue of enforcement.
Right. So I, I think if we, typically how we'd handle that is if we get a complaint, we'd send our ordinance enforcement officer to investigate and report back, and then the zoning administrator and the ordinance enforcement officer at that time would take appropriate action.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess a risk I see, and I don't know how we fully capture it, you know, short of what they could do for enforcement. I mean, so just by way of example, and I guess this is a little bit of, I'm gonna say hearsay because I don't have hard numbers to give you, but my understanding is many, many homes around Lake Anne are now being used for short-term rentals. Some companies have come in, there's been significant number have turned to short-term rentals. Opportunity to go in, township permitted it. That's a , that community is forever different. So again, something to come back, not tonight, but on short-term rentals, I think to look at, but Lake Anne is having that. In that same vein, because there's profit opportunity, if Long Lake becomes an area where a builder can come in and build homes, I'm just gonna use the example again tonight because he was here, but you know, if all of a sudden Faber's property here, because they're one acres and you can put in an ADU on every single one of them, if I'm just a little bit entrepreneurial and I decide I'm gonna buy one of those, I'm gonna build a home, then I'm gonna build an ADU, and in pretty short order, I'm just gonna go ahead and rent both of them out, and me and 10 of my friends, who also have the same kind of interest, all of a sudden we got a subdivision on Long Lake, we can, know we can go in and make this happen. These are the kind of things that I think we need to make sure we can keep from happening because there's a lot of money to be made in some of these situations, and we're seeing people from out of the area taking advantage of it. So I want to make sure we do capture this in the strongest way possible, because it does give us risk.
Those are great points, especially on the developable property.
Right. And, yeah, so I don't have the answer, but I think we need to have some more brainstorming.
I'm not sure how it works completely, but well, even on Edgewood, there was one short-term rental wasn't complying with, and it took a little while, took a year or so, but they took away that ability, that owner to ever rent it again, and so ended up selling it. But I think a lot of it has, unfortunately, it's gonna take, as this one did, involvement from a neighbor to document, so on, and then resolve that issue. Township did work on these things and did enforce it.
And the one key element to our township's credit, the short-term rental ordinance is a police power ordinance, so there was teeth built in and activity in action and a license that could be revoked. That's different than what we're doing with the ADUs. That'll fall within our normal ordinance, and once it's there, they've got a use by right at that point, and you can't just go in and take the ADU or take the license away and say, no longer can you do this, unless we can figure out a way to make sure that we're preventing the unintended consequences from happening.
I think you have some limitations there, and again, like Cody says, you have to trust the public. I mean, we've had people build ADUs without permits, so.
So I know you can't treat different types of property owners differently, but is there anything illegal about saying an ADU is only available to a homesteader?
Yeah, so Todd suggested that by citing the PRE, we're treating that homeowner different than their neighbor who's not PRE. So yes, is I guess the short answer to that question.
It, this must have been dealt with in other communities. I'd like to learn more about that.
Some communities have that language in their ordinance, as far as you have to have a principal residence exemption, but I tend to fall to the advice of the attorney as far as whether or not we should follow that or not. There's some, how everybody else does it, I guess, is a good light to kind of guide us, but as far as in writing implementation, I would fall to his discretion on that. Seems like he'll be the one arguing it in court and knocking.
Yeah, I think so. But I would be interested to see if any of those communities that have the PRE requirement, what kind of legal, what kind of cases they've had come before them, and how they've been handled.
Yeah, I'm not sure on that.
And I guess I'm curious to why the state of Michigan can treat owners different, because I have my PRE and my neighbor doesn't, and I pay less taxes than him. So why can we not have other things apply to the same PRE?
Sure, that's tax law. So, I mean, this is specifically citing the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which is another set of Michigan laws that allow us to have a zoning ordinance and allow us to have zoning districts, but don't allow us to treat people in those districts differently based on their ownership class. So the principal residence exemption is a part of tax law that doesn't make you pay into the school system, basically, when you're not living there full-time.
So I think we need more time on number five, not as a homestead, but under the topic.
Right.
I got, I guess we'll talk about it here. I did talk to our tax assessor on this, but homestead tax exemption, so another question I had, with the homestead tax exemption or the PRE, we receive that if you're living here and it's your primary residence, we get it, don't pay as much tax because we're using the PRE. But that's also based upon how much you're using that home for income. So my question was, and kind of still is, how is that applied if now I've added an ADU and I'm renting it out? Do I still get the PRE on the entire property? Or is there something, again, we're not gonna manage that piece as a planning commission, but I'm curious as to, as to how that works.
Do we have authority to institute any tax laws?
No, that's what I'm saying. The planning commission certainly would. I'm just curious to how it works, because that has a bearing on our infrastructure and tax dollars being collected, and what does that mean? So in other words, we go to the neighborhood right here that we just approved for 61, it turns into 122, but they're all gonna be PREs, but there's 122 homes.
Yeah, but there's still, there's still 61 properties that are paying the tax.
Right.
And that's what it is. They're individual properties. They're not, they're not in, they're 61 individual properties, not 122 individual properties.
But there's 62 homes that are all gonna need fire protection. There's 62 homes that can be separately broken into and 62 homes that have an emergency.
We can make that, we can distinguish that difference.
No, I'm just bringing it as a point of consideration. How many do we want in the township? Because as that happens, that's gonna be potentially additional pressure on our infrastructure.
Exactly. A burden on the system.
I guess wouldn't the assessor, the value of the property with an ADU would be more than like a non-ADU property, so they would pay more taxes?
It's gonna start paying.
So I think it, I mean, to me, it seems like...
In part be captured. Yeah, and again, I'm not by any means saying we need to tax anything. I'm just, do we understand? Do we understand the implications?
It's a fair question. You know, you are, you are taxing the system in a sense, or the resources. But as he says, is, when I added on, I started paying more taxes. So, and I'm still just one home.
Right.
Yeah, so.
It's definitely revenue generated, but also, you know, we have the road issue to contend with, which is just, it's getting worse by the minute. And with the developments coming in and the potential developments coming in, that those, that issue doesn't seem to get addressed.
Right, right. And this kind of compounds that, potentially depending on, somewhere here I have a question of, I think I have a question, sort of, you know, is there any limits that we put in on these things? Limits by area, limits by, by the zoning?
Or even numbers per square mile or something? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know what the calculation would be, or just in total, sure. I mean, you know, Traverse City's done it by limiting only so many new ones per year. I mean, so there's different ways of looking at it, so, and they've done that to kind of watch and see what the implications are, and maybe they've even changed it. When they first implemented theirs, I think they, they allowed 10 or 15 a year. I don't know what the number was. I mean, so there are limits to be considered. I don't know if this group considered limits introductory, consider limits long-term, or do we not need limits because we're comfortable with what it would mean? In any case, kind of moving along, because we're gonna run out of time here even just to touch on each of these.
I know in the ad hoc, we talked about limits as the size of your lot. So Lake Residential's one acre minimum zoning. There's, takes out probably 70%, if not more, of all your lake lots that will not be allowed to have an ADU because they don't meet that one acre minimum zoning. So there's a lot of, I mean, there's so many parcels that are not conforming to that current ordinance that would just automatically, you can't have an ADU.
Right.
So that was a discussion we had in the ad hoc about limits, so I just wanted to bring that back up. That does help.
Sure.
That's about half the properties right now in the township.
And one other thing we need to keep in mind is why we're doing this. I mean, nationwide, zoning laws are being relaxed so that more houses can be built, and the reason is because our population is growing and we need inexpensive housing for young people. So I think it's important to pay attention to these specifics, but also to remember what the real question is we're addressing.
Right. Each of these things, it's gonna be a balance. I mean, each one of these things, it's, I think, a balance of the topic. So as I'm moving through, I circled number five and crossing off number six, because we're not gonna get involved. I just want the topic out that we're thinking about. There's nothing we can really do on that topic of number six, other than to be cognizant as we're thinking of the numbers. Is there anything we do want to do, not do, to specifically prohibit modulars being a part of this? I mean, do we want modular homes showing up? Do we want, tiny homes are a big industry? I mean, you go out west, tiny homes are, you know, a way of life out west. And there's some really cool tiny homes that pop in, you know, things that are on wheels, things that are mobile, permitted, not permitted in terms of ADUs, size aside. I mean, there are tiny homes built to 800 square feet, and then they can be popped up on wheels and relocated.
Don't, that would be like a house trailer, in a way. We already have permits for that if somebody wants to use one, correct? They have to get permits renewed every 30, 60, 90 days or whatever?
That's like an RV, though.
Well, they have wheels.
I mean, regardless, an ADU is under the assumption that it's a structure, and a structure is affixed to the ground.
Right.
So to be permitted under an ADU ordinance, you would have to fix it to the ground. A mobile unit would not be considered an ADU. It'd be considered something else under a zoning ordinance.
Right, but there's kind of a distinction between offsite manufactured and modular homes, but the distinction isn't, isn't very clear, and I'm suspecting that there will be a lot of modular homes that would develop, and there are some real quality modular homes. A mobile home without wheels can be a structure if it's set on a foundation. I'd be a little reluctant to limit modular. I know that modular has a bad reputation in terms of quality. Banks wouldn't finance them for a while. But I think that's the direction that the construction industry is going, because, you know, the question that modular home people ask, would you build a Mercedes out in the field? Why would you build a house out in the field? Build it in a factory where you can monitor quality in a more direct way. So I don't think that we're going to be able to legislate against modular homes.
But do we, relative to mobile homes, as you said, you could bring a mobile home in, take the wheels off, drop it on a concrete pad and say, here's my home. Are we prepared for that?
It wouldn't meet the 24 by 24 requirement. That's, and that, maybe somebody put that in an ordinance to address those in the past, you know?
How big's a double wide? I don't know.
Well, I think, I think certain modulars are, are gonna fit that, and we might not have problems with those types of modulars. I don't know.
But I guess that's my question. I don't wanna, I don't know if I want to say, I don't know. I think, can we hone in on what we do want to know, what we...
I'm feeling, I'm thinking that we're looking at requiring permanent foundations for structures. Does it say that somewhere? I didn't catch that.
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we just make sure that it follows construction code from the county. So if the county says the structure is adequate, we take their word for it. As far as whether or not they put a mobile home on a concrete foundation, if the county were to okay it, I guess under the current zoning ordinance and our understanding of it, that we would also okay it. Granted, it meets the 24 by 24 and any other provisions that we have in here.
So in other words, a double wide would, could potentially qualify as long as it's 24 feet wide?
I think that is the reason for the 24 by 24, because we can't get a single wide in that, and yes, because we don't have any, we don't need what the codes, that's all instructions, so they sign off on that area.
Right.
So the question is, are we comfortable if a double wide pops in and we're good with that? I guess just understanding, again, back to, it's a balance here. What do we want? What do we want to see show up?
I think we should make that part of our discussion about architectural codes, because a double wide, a quality modular home is not gonna look any different from a stick-built home.
I don't disagree.
And I think that the, that the architectural details on the outside are gonna be what makes the difference.
So I'll circle that and tie it back to the architectural topic of number two. Next one I have, maximum building height. Again, I just went back to a percentage. Should it be a percentage of the primary home? I think we had a height in there, but if it's gonna be subservient, I think we could potentially have some ADUs pop up taller than the primary. Do we want to make sure it's a percentage? I think the way I read it, maybe I'm wrong, but if we're trying to make them subservient, wouldn't it be subservient in height and size?
So the height requirement wouldn't be currently governed by the district regulation. So I think low-density amount, I think, is 35 feet. All residence is 35 feet, so basically an ADU wouldn't be able to go above 35, which if you're requiring a 24 by 24 base, then you're only left with, well, depending on what size you make your minimum. If it's 960, then you're only left with a couple hundred feet to make a second story. I doubt you're gonna make a third to it. But yes, short answer is, the height is governed by district regulation, which is 35 feet currently.
I would be reluctant to make the height a percentage of height of the existing structure. I think that architecturally, they can blend well. You know, if you've got a house that's, you know, it's got eight-foot walls, a 412 pitch, you can't make a house shorter than that.
I, I put this in because I had seen something on the other one, thinking, what if it had to be, how would you possibly make it shorter? There's gonna be situations you can't go shorter. So it sounds like we've got that one covered with our codes. Prohibit STRs, bed and breakfast, or any rental activities less than 30 days in duration? I think we...
That's part of it.
That's addressed by 2F, which has gone under a legal review, and I'm assured that that would effectively eliminate short-term rentals in ADUs. In fact, if you built an ADU on your property, you're giving up your right to do a short-term rental on the principal as well. So if you choose to construct two dwelling units on your property under that current language, you're giving up your right to do a short-term rental.
Okay, so that one's covered. Just as I read through the draft work, we use the language to enhance, where is that? It makes sense only if I read it, I think. So the draft language we have, the intent says, the intent of these regulations is to permit accessory dwelling units in a manner that enhances residential neighborhoods. So I like the word, I like the concept. What does that mean? How do we enforce it?
Enhances in that sense, I think the definition means adds to. I mean, it adds another housing type in the community. I don't know that there's anything to enforce. It's not necessarily a regulation. It's just an intent of declaration of what Section 4.28 is trying to do. There's not anything to be enforced there necessarily.
So devil's advocate, as we've had issues come up with STRs, we've had court cases brought to us where we've done STRs because, you know, they enhance neighborhoods, they enhance profitability for those, they enhance individuals to keep a family cottage in the house, or in the family because they can rent it out short-term. Now ADUs, but those STRs bring along some negatives, which we found out from court cases and issues that have come up. have come up. I'm certain we're going to have some negatives, at least from some neighbors, some situations out of ADUs. There are going to be some people in this community that do not like them. But yet we're saying it enhances the residential neighborhood. I think I can make an argument, you know, you pop all of my neighbors with ADUs, and all of a sudden I've got double the people living around me, double the homes around me from what I purchased and bought, double the cars coming in and out. I'm going to say, I don't know if that enhances my neighborhood.
So this would be the zoning administrator, I guess, getting an application and saying, this one doesn't actually enhance the neighborhood. I think that's kind of how that goes.
And, right, and how do you do that?
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't think he would. But, but yeah, I guess I, I think it'd be, we don't necessarily need to have words in there that we don't think we can enforce. But I would say enhances in this context would be something that would be hard to enforce. Because that, I guess that interpretation of it, you know, it doesn't make this neighborhood better is tough to be a, the criteria used to, to turn one down, I think.
Well, what, what we might want to say, because this is kind of a lead-in statement, and we do want to enhance the quality of life in Long Lake Township, but we need to understand that our population is increasing. There is going to be more traffic. There is going to be, are going to be more people. And I think if we address that in that statement somehow to say that in response to increasing demand for homes, that stated in a way that it becomes an enhancement of our community, that-
So the second portion of that, Dan, to your point, says provides affordable housing options and help meets the housing needs of Long Lake Township.
I understand the concern about traffic and roads and so on, but we're growing. It's going to happen no matter how, what we do. And it's better if we can regulate it.
So again, just a question I popped up, you know, and maybe it's just a simple thing of the units in a manner that intends to enhance the residential neighborhoods by providing affordable housing and the rest of what you have there. So it gives the idea that what we're trying to, we're enhancing resident, we intend to enhance residential neighborhoods by providing-
We can add the word intend if you guys choose to.
Kind of semantics, in terms of more clearly define what we're trying to enhance is the variety of housing opportunities that we're trying to enhance.
And just to make sure I heard you correctly, dwelling units in a manner that intends to enhance, is that what you-
Correct.
Okay.
Just for clarification, in our definitions, the draft obviously shows for an accessory dwelling unit, but we also have a definition for accessory dwelling unit to commercial use and accessory dwelling unit. I guess just understanding the difference of those and making sure as we apply this throughout the entire ordinance, make sure we have no confusion.
Yeah. So currently in Long Lake Township zoning ordinance, we have an accessory dwelling unit to a commercial use. It's regulated by a separate section. And forgive me, I don't have the number off the top of my head. But that doesn't allow accessory dwelling to a residential use. So this would be, you own a grocery store and you want to build a little living unit so you can live in it and operate your business. That's what that pertains to. It doesn't pertain to a residential lot.
So should we just be consistent, accessory dwelling unit to a commercial use and accessory dwelling unit to a residential use?
You can. Common terminology is just ADU.
Yeah. I guess me and I men are just trying to, everywhere we get chances to clean things up and not have confusion.
If anything, I think maybe we'd want to modify the accessory dwelling to commercial. Is there a definition? I think you're saying there is definition for accessory dwelling to commercial use. Because that could be confusing for somebody who's, or if somebody has a, an attorney who wants them to be able to have, I guess, an accessory, you know, the accessory dwelling rules in the commercial district could try to say-
Currently, under the proposed ordinance, the only districts that allow an ADU would be residential neighbor, in nature. And local business and general business aren't proposed to be allowing ADUs as a permitted use.
Yeah. I guess that's my, that might be the concern that is somebody's reading this and saying, well, there is an accessory dwelling to commercial uses, but that has its own section, I recall. So-
Tim, I can find that section for you here if you brief, hold brief with me here.
So I'm not an attorney, Tim, but I guess another thing that comes to my mind is you just stated that. Back on STRs, the laws keep changing. But the state of Michigan, we've now had several court cases that STRs are now determined to be commercial use, commercial activity?
I guess my recollection was that it was under some, under some bylaws or restrictive covenants that limit to residential use. Court, there's, there's court precedent where with the language that was in certain bylaws or certain covenants, that limitation of residential use was found to prevent short-term rentals by, by courts. That's my understanding or recollection of-
Ken, I think there's been an additional court case down at the MTA here, whatever, last month or the month before, we sat and listened to an attorney speak on that. But my, my question really is, if this says, so now I have an STR, I'm licensed, the state now says what I'm doing is commercial use, so now I'm going to say, I want to do an accessory dwelling to my commercial use?
But it's zone residential.
You also wouldn't be allowed because it says in, later on in the draft ordinance that if you have an STR, you're not allowed to have an ADU.
Okay, there we go.
So that would be your ADU regulation. And then as far as if somebody has an STR and they want to build on to that, I don't believe it would match the definition of an accessory to a commercial use.
Cody, what if the state passes one of these STR acts that they're looking at that takes away local control over regulating STRs? Do you think there's a chance that we could have these ADUs added and then later, because we're, you know, our hands are tied by state law, have to allow them for short-term rental?
Potentially. In October, attorney recommended to us that we add a definition to short-term rentals in the zoning ordinance so that we can better regulate it in our own zoning ordinance. And we failed to adopt that. So we don't currently have a definition in the zoning ordinance for a short-term rental or a tourist home or any other definition you want to give it. So if the state took away our local control, that police power would then be rescinded, then we wouldn't have anything to reference like this ordinance does.
Chances are, it probably will happen.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know where that legislation currently sits, but there's a potential. I know there's been discussion, especially with the, they use the terms housing crisis, but the, the housing issues that we're experiencing, they are investigating, taking more local control away, which obviously doesn't bode well for us. But we will address it if it comes.
So under that line of thought, back to huge concern. So you take the, I'll go back again, favor's going to just really not like me. But this is not him. It's just because it came up tonight, if you got a lot, a property right next door, 61 homes, state pulls back the STR ability for local communities to regulate. Now this becomes extremely attractive to come in and start doing STRs in both of the homes. Because I've got an ADU opportunity and I can put every one of those, I'm going to come in and, that's a slippery slope we could have facing us on any single ADU we permit. And all of a sudden, you get a subdivision, not that Mr. Favor wants to do, but somebody could want to do it, and take 80 acres. We're super close to Traverse City and everything we're trying to accomplish with more affordable housing, we just completely blew out because we took 80 acre parcel that has no single family homes other than they're all being used for STRs. Because I can put two on every one of them. That becomes real profitable.
That would be a tremendous problem. I think the weight of the conversation has shifted back, though, because so many communities have been up in arms about the possibility of state taking it over because it would destroy communities. And I, I would, personally would be surprised if the state passed that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I've heard it both ways. Some saying it's going to change for sure, and some saying, to your comments, that it's going the other direction. But, but a concern on what we're doing here, because that suddenly opens things up in a way back to unintended consequences that I think was brought up earlier. Something to think about as we're honing in on a decision or an ordinance. The other thing that, here, so item number 12, Traverse City has an annual accessory dwelling unit registration process. Should we have a registration process? I'm not sure if theirs is police ordinance then, if they're doing registration. I'm not clear on theirs. You know, that, that's one thing we have with our STRs, is police ordinance. We have a licensing process, and that can be theoretically legally removed at any time. So we suddenly decide we're going to move away from STRs, licenses could not be renewed in X amount of time, and that goes away. ADUs don't go away once they're built. However, Traverse City does have an annual registration process. Have we looked into what and why and how it's working?
I don't have the knowledge on how they're able to do that. Cities have a different set of, or a different set of rules they're allowed to operate under. So it's potential that they're doing it in a police power manner or a different manner in which they're given the right to, but we're not. I, I don't know. I don't have an idea of how they're currently operating that.
But now that we're a charter township, we have a lot of the same opportunities as a city, correct?
Sure, we have some. We have, especially with taxation, but it's just an annexation. But I don't, I, I can't speak to how the city is operating that. Currently, I don't know enough about their program.
It's hard to imagine that the benefits would outweigh the increased pressure on the township staff.
Right. I'd be curious to know how it works. I mean, they're right next door. I mean, it seems remiss if it's happening adjacent to us to not understand what and why. We may find out real quick, we can't do it anyway, so cross it off. Or maybe we find out there's real reason, you know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Let's see what they've come up with and what, how, why, and-
I'll check into that.
Hey, Kevin, before we move on, I just want to remind everybody it's pushing 8 o'clock. So we're, need to extend our meeting if we're going to continue.
I'd make a motion to extend the meeting beyond 8 o'clock.
I'll second.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Tim to extend the meeting and support by Dennis. Is there any discussion?
I think the students might have something to say about that, but-
We only have to say for two hours.
Okay.
We only got to say, we only got to say-
And, and yeah, and I guess my thoughts are just, there's, I got two more items on here, and I think a lot of-
I know, we're almost done. We almost got, we, we only have a few more things to get through, but just formality wise. So we do have a motion by Tim and support by Dennis to extend the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we can keep going.
The next one I had, something that Holland had, again, I don't understand how, why, what necessarily, but Holland has a pretty well-developed ordinance for ADUs. And I actually included it in the packets everybody could look at. But within theirs, there was one thing that I found interesting. It's in their section, section seven, in their impact of ADUs, item F, they have what they call a post-approval requirement. Says, I'll just read it. Construction may commence on an ADU following approval by the zoning administrator or board of appeals or infill, infill design review and the issuance of a building permit. The ADU construction is complete and sort of, after the ADU construction is complete and a certificate of occupancy has been obtained, the property owner shall record with the county register of deeds notifying potential buyers of the ADU requirements specified in this section. So they're taking a step to make sure that it goes to the deed. So a future buyer knows, if I buy this, I can't have an STR. They know, they can only rent 30 days for the one before. They know that they need to reside in one of those properties. If we're going to have quite a few of those that we feel are necessary requirements to have an ADU, is this something that you'd also consider just making sure that it's, it's tied, tied to the deed? So the future property owner knows what they're getting into in a title search, and they're not coming back to us saying, wait a minute, I bought this and I've got X amount of money and I want to have an S, an STR and you didn't tell me? Or saying, did you do a deed search?
Yeah. We had a conversation about that. Do you recall the details of that? We talked about creating a master deed restriction, or a deed restriction, I mean.
Well, there's, could we enforce somebody to register something with the county register, register of deeds? I'm, I'm sure we could. The question then becomes, are we able to enforce a self-imposed deed restriction? Are you, the question is, can we ask a homeowner who's building an ADU to, at the county register of deeds, note that they're not going to have a short-term rental in the ADU because it's not currently allowed under township zoning ordinance?
I, I don't think they say, here's what I can and can't do. I think they say that they're subject to the ADU ordinance.
So they're just saying, okay. It's a bit redundant because any house bought in the township is going to be under the township zoning ordinance, whether or not it's the purchaser's liability or the seller's liability to tell each other that they fall under that ordinance? I guess I don't understand what their intent is in crafting that language. It seems like they're asking them to let them know that there's a township zoning ordinance, but the township has been zoned since 79. So I guess I'm not understanding what their intent behind that was.
Well, in truth, enforcement would be a civil suit, and it wouldn't involve the township. If, if there was something that wasn't-
Disclosed.
Communicated or disclosed, that, that would be an issue for this. Yeah.
Yeah. So maybe not needed, as you say. I mean, I guess we have an ordinance and the ordinance is there and they're subject to it. It's just interesting that Holland did it.
I mean, I've heard of this as one other time, and actually it's very recently, but it was specific to special land use permits, so what we call conditional land use permits, which makes sense because it's a different use than what is in the zoning ordinance. You're allowed to continue to operate that. This would just be something that's permitted as by right. So it's a little different. I don't, I, I guess I'm not sure why they're making folks do that, but-
Would it be advantageous to find out if there's something that we're not thinking of?
We can. I just don't know that if we force somebody to register the register of deeds that we have any action we can take to enforce that down the road. I mean, we can make sure, they can give us a copy of their paperwork for the register of deeds. We can give them their final occupancy, but then down the road, if somebody buys that property and doesn't take that disclosure and tries to get a short-term rental license, it's not on the township to enforce that they didn't read their document fully.
They would, they would be denied the short-term rental.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. That kind of verbiage sounds a little bit like Big Brother to me. It's just an extra regulation that doesn't really have any real impact.
Right. I mean, that's, and that's what I guess I wanted to get at. I mean, or, they're going to be subject to it in any case and subject to the same rules. So I, I just found it interesting that they had it and went to that extent.
Sure. There's some communities for various reasons. I mean, that community doesn't happen to be next door to us, but there may have a significant problem with disclosure issues and they're trying to get ahead of it. Who knows? I mean, there's so much that goes on.
Let's see. The, the other things that Holland had in there. So they had the, the comment on the register of deeds. They had, they did have a limit on number of people that would live in the home based upon bedrooms. They had notice given to neighbors within 300 feet if they were given a permit for an ADU, I guess, so that way the neighbors would know. And maybe that's even more important if it's going to be an attached, because you might not otherwise realize that you've got another entity. I don't know if that is important or not important to let neighbors know. We do it with STRs right now. Let anybody within 300 feet know that there's an STR license. Do you do within 300 feet at least initially, hey, there's an ADU going in next to you? From a notification standpoint, I don't know.
300 foot notice.
I was going to say, they might, they're, like Cody alluded to a minute ago, is they might have a whole nother way of regulating them that isn't part of the zoning ordinance. So this-
It may all tie back to that. Maybe they're using some police ordinance.
That 300 foot too is a metric for conditional land uses, special land uses in state of Michigan. If you have a, like tonight, we had the Y request the CLU, we had to notify everybody within 300 feet. But that's a township burden that we have to notify neighbors. But that typically resides not with a permitted use, but a conditional use.
Yeah. So again, I'm not saying that all this is necessary. I'm not sure that it is. It does, as Dan said, some of it seems to kind of overburden some. And just interesting things, if any, that triggers for anybody to think we need to look further at any of those pieces. those pieces. And then finally, the last one, what have I got here? Oh, have we looked at, what are we going to do with current or pre-existing situations? We do have some lots, you know, some built without propriety, some built before there was an ordinance in place where there's multiple homes on the same lot. What are we doing to address those? What are we doing if some of those might already have an STR? And now all of a sudden this comes in, but now what they really have is an ADU. How do we capture that? How do we deal with them? Are they somehow grandfathered in? Do they fall into this? How do they fall in?
So under the draft ordinance as it's written currently, the two topics that you discussed, one was if you have an STR license in an ADU currently, because you have an existing non-conforming ADU. The way that the draft ordinance treats that is as long as, from staff estimation, I think it's two properties that may fall under that categorization. As long as they continue to maintain and hold a short-term rental license, we're going to treat them as they are being treated today. If somebody has, does not have a short-term rental license and they have an existing non-conforming ADU on the property, they would become basically grandfathered in the current ordinance language where we would not force them to bring it up to the standard set forth in 428 as proposed. So they would be able to continue to have the use of their property as they do now under an existing non-conformance. They could actually be more conforming because the use would be conforming, but the sizes or whatever else maybe wouldn't be.
It wouldn't allow them to get a short-term rental.
But we still would not allow them to get a short-term rental license.
You're only grandfathering current poll on you to continue to short-term rent. You said you had one, you came after this ordinance, we didn't have that.
So we would need to very clearly document every one of those at the time that this ordinance is being put in place. So we have a master list, we're not questioning, I guess, 10 years from now.
Which we have. We currently have a couple of different documentations of all our short-term rentals and locations and.
So how many properties does that affect right now?
Estimated to be two.
Okay.
And then we would reach out to those two to let them know, so they're not walking in the dark and.
We could.
Okay. So those are my 14 questions and I think maybe I've got one, two, three, four, about five of those areas to kind of come back and look at. I don't know if we want to do that in a work study or it goes back to the group that was the ad hoc committee or do it. I don't know what everybody's thoughts, feelings, suggestions to move through.
I guess Cody, do you have a suggestion as how we might want to just bring this back to everybody or?
Yeah, I would suggest, because the ad hoc committee already met, already went over some of this and brought to you draft ordinance language to discuss, my suggestion, if there's clear directives you want to give to either staff or other commissioners to address some of these issues that are agreed upon, we can come back and you can either choose to do it in a special meeting or a study session at a time other than your regularly scheduled meeting, or you could choose to put it on the agenda for your regular scheduled meeting, which should be in June, end of June, so.
Do we have, do we have much on our next regular meeting agenda yet or?
Currently, there's, there was not a CLU that was turned in in time for that meeting, so no public hearings and anything you guys punt from today would go on there, obviously. So currently, no. Staff has some, actually, I take that back. There's potential for another zoning ordinance amendment to come in front of you at the next meeting from staff regarding some cleanup from our zoning ordinance, but that will be discussed here in a little bit, so.
I'd like to see it go to a study session. There's a lot here to go over.
It'd require quite a bit of chewing, I think. I'm okay either way, I guess. Do we, do we want to try to pick a date or have staff poll us via email for possible dates that work for them?
Yeah, the best works, best way to do that usually is to set a couple of dates and poll as far as availability goes. You'll have to have at least four people for a quorum. And then it would be under the rules of a special meeting, which limits the discussion to one topic. And then you could have it when you so choose. My question would be, if that is your choice, just please be clear on your directive as far as how quickly you want to do that and what you'd like staff to complete before.
One of the things I'm going to do is clarify what the four or five topics are, so we know ahead of time.
The ones I had circled, as I went through, I circled number two and then subsequently tied that to number seven with Dan's comments, number three, number five, and getting some information on number 12.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody had any others that's.
I'd like to get the status on the state regulating, find out where that's at.
Yeah, I don't know if they've reintroduced a bill this session or not. Last I knew, it all died, but I think there was still, yeah, so we should probably try to get an update on if there's even a bill in or not that'll give an indication if they're trying to work on something or not. Has anything even been introduced? I don't know.
Yeah, and I haven't read it, but I'd like to read it and see what's going on with
Those matched all the ones I circled. I did also had number 10, the enhances. I don't know if we ever got to a, somewhere around that question, but.
Had it in the cross or circled, yeah.
Somebody added the verbiage intends to enhance.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know if we wanted to.
I guess bring that language back, I guess, just to make sure we're looking at it.
Yeah.
I guess, I think you kind of had it Cody, but maybe just bring it back.
Yeah, I have it jotted down.
So I guess the stuff we're looking at reviewing is kind of more along standards for architecture, size, those type of things. I don't know, how do we, how would, how would you guys like to further explore those issues as far as giving staff direction to bring something back to us or?
I think two and three is a lot of us having conversation engaging staff, but I think it's, I think it's more of a debate. I don't know if we need, I guess we, I suppose get some research on how many communities have done something, but I don't know how relevant that is. We know it's out there. It's just what do we think collectively on those things and think of the pros and cons?
I'd like to know what results communities have had with trying to enforce it.
Yeah, so that could be.
Or implement it.
I think five and seven could probably use some staff research to understand, you know, the legalities of definitions of how the county would work with, you know, foundation, modular homes. I guess there's probably some legal things tied to five and seven. What can we, can't we do? And Dan, you were going to look at number 12. You thought you have something to, and then I guess call it number 15, Sherry's comment of getting an update on state, any updates on state legislation, any legislative activity related to STRs?
So let me just clarify real quick. Of the items left that need to be clarified, they're regarding size of ADU, architectural elements, how the city handles their ADU and the state intentions on their proposed regulation. Size and architectural was mentioned that the commissioners need to discuss further to debate exactly what limits you guys would like to put on that. City Commissioner Paulson graciously said they, he would look into how the city handles that. The other question was enforcement of PRE. So legal reviewed and said we're not allowed to, not allowed to treat ownership classes differently, but the question is how other communities that are currently using that language are enforcing that. And then there's a state update. So there's five items that would like to be discussed at this next study session or special meeting.
And Cody, I'll get a copy of the bill for the state regulations.
Is that enough directive?
Yeah.
Okay. So then I guess we just need to come up with a meeting date to be determined in the future.
Okay, I will poll commissioners and see what the best availability is. I assume evening time is probably the best for most, but I will give a few options as far as what we have going on, so.
Give us a couple of days to get our work done.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I think, I mean, you'll probably be looking into June or beyond, so. But, okay, thank you. All right, so now we're going to move on to 9B as amended in our agenda, the tree preservation ordinance discussion. So Sherry, I'm assuming this came from Sherry?
It did.
Yes, says from you. So yeah, if a proposal.
Do you want to read it into the record or would you want me to?
It's part of the record, but you can go ahead and just kind of go over it if you want.
For the residents, I'll read it, it'll just take a minute here. Planning Commissioners, as you are aware, we've previously discussed this issue. I think this is maybe the third time, hopefully the charm. We want to establish a tree ordinance ad hoc committee and as you gave a directive at the last meeting, it's put in a proposal form. So pursuant to your request, I'm seeking the board's approval to establish a Long Lake Township tree preservation ad hoc committee. As you are aware, this item was previously authorized by the township attorney in 2024. The goals of the ad hoc committee will be to protect the natural and historic environment resource, environmental resources, to preserve and enhance the features that make the charter township of Long Lake unique. Research, evaluate data, enhance site plan landscapes, draft plans to incorporate the proposed ordinance with the natural features findings and zoning ordinance effects. By focusing on protecting the trees in our township, we'll be, we will be helping the following. Reducing lake stream wetlands and swale runoff that is currently washing landscape chemicals, debris and et cetera into our waterways. Minimize erosion, protect the habitats of pollinators, maintain clean air, educate residents in environmentally friendly fertilizers, explore the benefits of being a member of the Tree City USA. The goals will be to enhance site plan landscapes, review the logistics of incorporating the tree ordinance with the natural features findings, zoning ordinance effects and tree preservation on large tracts of land. Action items, form a team of residents to collect and research data from neighboring communities and best practices, state and federal guidelines. Gather information, present a summary with conceptual prioritization. Should you have any questions, please advise. And then there's a list of resources and references for your information.
Thanks, Sherry. Does anybody have any questions for Sherry or anybody else?
I don't have any questions, no. Think it's a topic, well, I guess I'll make a comment. I think it's a topic that we've been spending our master plan conversations, secondary master plan conversations, probably long overdue to just get moving forward to begin looking at ways that we could have some sort of a tree ordinance for the township, you know, to the breadth and depth that's appropriate. And I don't know, but that's what this would help us do.
I guess my question to staff is procedurally, I mean, I know we can appoint, we can form committees, I mean, does, does the board need, the township board need to approve such a committee to take?
No, your bylaws state that the chairperson may appoint standing or special purpose committees comprised of members of the planning commission. Such committees may also include members of the township board and other citizens to assist the planning commission and planner with research analysis and identification of issues, so on and so forth. I won't get the whole section.
So, yeah, does, I guess, open for volunteers. I think, yeah, Sherry, is there any other volunteers on the commission? We can't have more than a quorum. We can only have up to three. We could have two if that's what it works out.
Yeah, the special committees can comprise of what you see fit. So for example, the activity center committee, I guess for lack of a better word, didn't necessarily have a commissioner on it. You were encouraged to attend, but weren't forced to. You are able to appoint the committee to be comprised of solely commission members or up to X number of residents or particular residents or township board members. So I mean, you kind of have leeway when it comes to that, so.
Have you heard from any residents volunteering for the committee? I don't know, do we have to approve? I don't want to say approve, but.
There's been several residents have shown interest in it, but my, my thought was is to have our clerk post it and see, you know, for residents to sign up and see how that, see how that goes. And maybe if a couple of the board members want to join in on it, that's great. If not, I'm able and willing to tackle it on my, on my own with bringing everything back to this board for consideration. Max is not here either. He might have some interest in it.
I guess I, I like the action items you presented as far as, you know, this is what we're going to do and come back to us with, you know, present a summary and prioritization of the elements. So I think that's helpful. But yeah, as far, I'm, Kevin, would you want to?
Mind the comment, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not sure I could commit the time to be on the ad hoc committee. However, I would certainly participate. I mean, I guess with the activity centers, I wasn't on it, but I think I made, I don't know how many meetings there were, I think I made all but one or two. I would do anything I could to attend, but I'm not sure I could commit to being on it as long as, I think as long as we had one person leading and there's enough community interest. I mean, we're just trying to get a team to come back with what should be done. I think I'm encouraging of it and I would certainly participate when I could. I'm not sure that I would, you know, so I don't want to say that I'm not sitting here quiet, so you know. I like the idea. I'd like to participate to the extent that I can, so I'm just articulating that to the group, so I support it and would be there to the extent that I can.
As far as the internal structure of the committee goes, you don't have to decide that today. If you take Commissioner Murphy's presentation and say, these are the goals and outlines we want you to come back with, you can leave that internal structure up to Commissioner Murphy and/or any other volunteers that are present or any other commission members that are interested in joining, so.
Okay.
So we don't need a motion, that can just be chair.
Just take it writing, Bob, when you get a minute, send me an email saying you're creating a commission, or a, geez, a committee based on the goals outlined by Commissioner Murphy's statement. We can work on that with her, get it moving.
All right. Well, I'll do that. I'll follow up with Cody with an email to that effect and, and then have the clerk or office kind of put it out there for community volunteers.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments about that? Moving on, new business? We have no other new business. Brief public comments. We are up to the second public comment period, so there's a few of you that know the drill, so name an address, please. You have three minutes.
Lloyd Morris, 8178 Barney Road. First of all, I want to congratulate you all. You did much better than the township board with your microphones. Halfway. you all. You did much better than the township board with your microphones. Halfway through, I was, I was testing out the ear things that they have, and halfway through, there was a loud pop, and I lost you all. But I put my hearing aids back in, and I can hear you fine. So, thank you very much. The, I represent the grumpy old men who can't hear well, and they all thank you. Second of all, there's been a lot of talk tonight about, on the ADU discussion about Traverse City and Holland, and I think Kalamazoo might have been in the packet that you sent.
These Grand Rapids, you know.
Yeah. Okay. Long Lake Township is a rural township. That's why people move here. We are not a city. We don't need to do what Holland, Traverse City, especially Traverse City, and Kalamazoo or any Grand Rapids do. We need to keep our rural nature, and we need to let the property owners have their rights. You start getting into architectural design and all this stuff, you're making them do what you want them to do, not what they want to do. Now, if you live in an HOA that has things like that, they know that going in. But like myself, I don't live in an HOA. I don't want to have to do what you want me to do with my buildings. I want to do, as long as it passes building code, that should be good enough. So, we are a rural area. We need to stay that way. We have, when I was, the OEO, one of my biggest things was people move up here from downstate, and they say, oh, we wanted to come up to this nice rural area, but then they complain about it and want to bring the same rules as they had downstate. So, just remember that. Thank you.
Thanks, Lloyd.
I have to write things down now. Chris Crew, thirty sixteen Collier Road. So, the thing that I thought about as we're looking at conforming low-density residential homes and allowing an ADU, like what Kevin said, sixty-one units turning into one hundred and twenty-two, it seems that that's taking a low-density residential and turning it to a medium-density residential. It's like a disconnected duplex. So, we started out with something under one pretense, and we're ending up with something under another. And it's going, it could morph that way. I'm not saying that the half-acre parcels are going to go that way, but the, the conforming parcels should, certainly could end up with a higher density that we don't intend it to be. So, I don't know what it takes to try to keep the intent and the act, the words to match, but we could end up with something different. Secondly, we are putting in commercial capabilities in a residential space. If you're renting for money, not like what other people have talked about, developing something so their families can live there, but renting for money, that is turning a commercial space in place. As we heard, there is a litigation that went around here that was specifically restricting it on the deed. I just looked at my title, and Collier Road is completely residential only. It also says it's a house, a garage, and a boathouse. So, there is not supposed to be any short-term rentals on Collier Road. I would assume Collier Heights itself probably has the same restrictions just because of how it was plotted. And then the third, and that's, that's basically was my third point. But I think to check and make sure that we're not allowing, I want to say scope creep, or if you're going to allow scope creep, you at least revise things so that it, they match, that the intent matches with what's actually going to happen.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody else? All right. We'll close the last public comment period and on to reports. Township Board, Kevin.
The primary thing I want to touch base on, obviously at our last meeting, in a three-to-three vote, we did not move forward on the Activity Center ordinance. I expressed my disappointment with what our planning commission had done during that year of time that we had under the moratorium and what we did and did not do for the community. So, I took that information to the township board, and just because I like to put everything all out, if you didn't look or didn't see or didn't hear, I want to share back with this board directly. I mean, in maybe somewhat shorter language, but I shared with the board that I thought our planning commission on a few topics has not only not been proactive, we've actually not been reactive, because we've allowed some things to happen in those Activity Centers. We got blindsided, I say we, over time, maybe not this exact makeup of a board, but the Township Planning Commission through the course of years, got blindsided by some things that happened in the Activity Center. We had the opportunity at that point to be reactive, and now we've taken the last several years and managed to do nothing on that topic. So, I do feel that we need to come back and look at the Activity Centers. We did manage to get a sub area master plan in place that gives a vision. But as we all know, the vision is a vision. We need an ordinance to actually have teeth to it. So, I, I guess, I'd be curious with each of the planning commission members if we want to come back and relook at it. I know we came to a point where we could not get that passed, and there's probably still some variation, some changes, some modification, where we did not have enough dialogue or didn't get enough of the topics out for whatever reason to arrive at an ordinance. But I, I think we would be very remiss to move forward and just leave that in our rearview mirror, having done nothing. So, I guess I'd be curious, if not reaching too far, if I could just see by show of hands or by individual, who thinks we should still move forward with something on the Activity Center? And I guess I've done this once before, so I'll start at that end, Sherry. I'm sorry, but.
I, I think we should. It was, you know, I feel like we dropped the ball, and it's the will of the residents. We had a lot of residents at those meetings and spent a lot of time on it. Give it one more shot.
Tim?
Yeah, happy to, happy to look at it again. I think we, we gave it a shot at that meeting, but, yeah, didn't, didn't go through, but, yeah, always happy to look at it again.
Dennis?
I think we're up against an artificial deadline. I don't think we studied the underlying zoning. I also think that in this rural place, you're not going to see things happen in these community centers like you may think you want to see them. I think they're going to take their own course in time. I, I think we're wasting our time with it. It's my opinion.
So you don't, don't believe we should be doing anything else with the Activity Centers?
No. There were a lot, I know Sherry wasn't here. There were a lot of people, you know, we, we affected businesses, the value of businesses, the ability to finish developing a business in the one particular area. We were up against a deadline because everybody's worried about another Dollar General or whatever, and I just think we went about wrong with the, we were ruling with, or governing with moratoriums. It does not work.
So, today we have no moratorium?
Right.
We discussed at the last meeting, there are ways of working with the issues that were brought forward.
Not to be in an argument, but I heard a lot of people, I think about this place and how it's gone. I've talked with people that have the businesses there. We have people going into other people's yards photographing the wheel locks, the business and that. There were just things going on. I don't think we're ready for it. I think this will take its own course. If somebody wants to come in and buy all that property there and turn it into Rochester Hills, so be it.
Other than as a planning commission, we have an obligation to work with ordinances. And ordinances are designed to look at the future, which is what a master plan does, and then the ordinance builds towards the future. So you're saying we shouldn't be doing that?
What I'm saying is sometimes no is an answer.
Okay. And I, that's what, that's why I'm asking the questions.
We didn't have to pass it, and we didn't. Okay?
So you're not interested in looking at it further? You think we should leave it?
No, I'm not.
Okay, that's, that's an answer. Bob, your thoughts?
I'm okay, I'm okay with looking at it further. I figured we would be. I think we started off under the gun after the master, or the sub area plans were presented with the moratorium. I don't think that was necessary, but that's what we were dealing with. And I, I knew it was going to be a, a tough task to get something implemented, you know, within a time limit. So, I think without that time limit constraint, we're, we can take a fresh look at it, and I, I would support that.
Okay. Dan, what do you think?
I would support looking at it further. I think that the blindsiding happened in both directions at the last meeting. And I think that we can, we have more information now. I think we can approach the whole issue from a broader perspective and more intelligently. It's going to take time, and I don't think that we need to feel that we have to get it done right away. I think, I think it's a sensitive issue, but our job is to help guide development in the community in a way that enhances the value of the community. I think it's our responsibility.
Okay. Well, thank you. I, I guess with that, you know, Max isn't here to give his input, but at this point, we'd have five of us at least feeling in favor of looking at it further. And doesn't mean we all don't participate, and I mean, there's, you know, opinions and input, you know, from both sides of every issue. So I think we would need to listen through all that. I would encourage that we get it back on an agenda. We don't have to be on a tight timeline, but I guess, I would encourage moving it on the next meeting agenda. We spent a lot of time in the past year to let our minds stay away from it. We've now been away from it thirty days. We're going to be away from it sixty days by the time we next talk about it. I think the sooner we get started back on it, not having a dent on the backside, but I think we should have it regularly scheduled and to begin working through it. Maybe at some point, if, just like we're doing with the ADUs, maybe a working session. I mean, as much as this setting is nice and sometimes sitting around a table, like a, an executive table where we can sit and talk and, and look each other in the eye, might be an easier way to kind of begin to punch through and talk through the issues. The only reason I suggest maybe a, a, a working study session at some point to work with it, but, you know, maybe that's not where we start. Maybe we start getting it back on the agenda, see where we are from where we last left off, and then get some things in place to just move forward on a methodical manner. It was one of our one A items out of the master plan to be focused on, and I think we should move forward. So I guess I'd ask the chair to, if we can have that on the agenda for next meeting and begin to task through it.
Yeah, I guess, I, I would just have asked staff to keep it on the list and, I mean, it looked like we had room to talk about it. Maybe it's just a brief regroup and kind of get a direction going forward type of agenda item next time.
Okay. I can include it in the agenda as summarize the efforts that have been made and go from there. Further discussion?
Summarize the, summarize the efforts, but also bullet, like the top five issues, you know, the top three to five issues or something like that. So you don't have to pull everything out again, and you know what I'm saying?
Sure. I mean, I can summarize. I don't know if we have necessarily listed issues that are discrepancies between commissioners, which it sounds like you guys want to discuss. But I can pull out, I guess, just the timeline of what has been done and the result of that timeline. And then we've already discussed that lengthy goals and objectives. I think it's just a matter of determining a step of implementing said goals that the majority of you can agree upon. And that's going to come out, I guess, in more of a discussion form between the seven of you instead of me telling you what the next step should be, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Kevin. Max isn't here for a ZBA report, but did you guys have a meeting? Okay.
Max, Matt's not on mic, but they have one next week for folks if they're watching it.
I heard, but, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
For the viewing audience.
For the viewing, yeah. For the folks on C-SPAN.
Thank you. I wonder what our, what our views are.
I don't know.
Two, maybe, something. We'll find, we'll have the stats at some point here, so. Planner Report. All right, Cody, you had a couple things listed.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief, because I know we're kind of running into the evening. But there are a few things that I wanted to give you an update on. One is that your next meeting staff might be presenting a zoning ordinance amendment proposal for you regarding dwelling multiple families. There's some, from what I can tell, clerical issues with how it got implemented and how it's been treated in the past. So I'll have more information on that moving forward, but we may have a public hearing next month regarding that. And then as far as the zoning ordinance, housekeeping, and bylaws go, bylaws is listed there to discuss potentially amending our bylaws so that we are more conforming with, I guess, the township board and how they run meetings as far as our agenda. It's all listed in our bylaws and what we write on the agenda. So, for example, this evening, you had ADU discussion, but because of how it's listed in the agenda, you were forced to move it in respect for applicant's time. So, just kind of looking at some of the inner workings of that is on the slate, and staff will present that to you as recommended changes for that. And then zoning ordinance, housekeeping, there's two items that fall onto that. One is if staff finds a clerical error or a capital letter that's wrong or something, we're not allowed to change that. We have to go through a zoning ordinance amendment to change anything in that book. So, we're compiling a list of things we see on a day-to-day basis and later, or clarify items in the book that are either typoed or spelt wrong or those types of things. The other housekeeping item is the last time our, our zoning ordinance has been addressed as a whole, it was two thousand and ten. So, understanding that we have a lot of initiatives that are moving forward, one of the things that staff would like to express interest in venturing further is looking at the book as a whole and how our mechanisms work from a broader context and, and maybe to the extent even of getting consulting help to reanalyze how our book as a whole is operating. And so, we'll continue to give you updates on that as we investigate that a little further, but I wanted to get that on your guys' radars. That's part of the staff time that is being expressed on a month-to-month basis here, so.
Thanks, Cody. Moving on, we have no correspondence. Commissioner Comments? Does anybody have anything to add tonight?
I would just like to thank the township supervisor and the board members and the staff for their hard work for this beautiful facility that we're in. It is very professional. It's, it's nice, and it's for years to come.
Ditto that. Tim, anything? Dennis, anything? All right. No other comments, then we're up to adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Kevin. Moved to adjourn by Sherry and support by Kevin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. I really appreciate your questions.